Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would like to call the City Council portion of the City Council Port Authority Concurrent Meeting to Order.
And I would like to call the Port Authority portion of the Joint Meeting to Order.
Start tonight, if we could, with a roll call of members. Carolyn, if you could help us, please.
For the Council, Beloga.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Coulter.
Present.
Lohman.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
And Bussie.
Present.
Thank you. Six zero. And for the Port Authority, Bussie.
Present.
Carter.
Present.
Erickson.
Present.
Hunt.
Present.
Peterson.
Present.
Keller. Lundz. Five present.
Thank you. Let the record show we have six members of the City Council, five members of the Port Authority in attendance this evening. We have five items on our agenda this evening, one on the approval of minutes and then four under new business. We will start with the approval of the minutes of the May 4th, 2021 Concurrent City Council Port Authority Meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, and I would like to make note, Councilmember Lohman is now in attendance. Welcome. Good to see you, Duane.
Yes, you too.
Hearing no comments or questions from the City Council, I would look for a City Council, do we have to break these down? I'd look for a City Council motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve the council portion of Concurrent City Council Port Authority meeting minutes. No further discussion. Carolyn.
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Oh.
Pardon?
I will abstain.
Thank you.
I wasn't here for that meeting.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye.
Six zero with one abstain. Thank you.
And I would entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority minutes.
I'll move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Carolyn, do you want to do the roll call?
Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you.
Moving on on our agenda, under new business, item 2.1 is the Business Survey of Bloomington Businesses. And this was something that we had talked about, I think, looking for clarification or more information as we made our way through the pandemic, exactly how Bloomington businesses were faring and what their thoughts were on a variety of subjects. I see Barb Wolf going to introduce this for us. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. I think I'm safely six feet away. Good evening, Mayor, Council and Port Authority members. I'm Special Projects, what's my title? Special Projects and Initiatives Manager, Barb Wolf. So, back in April, we were before the same body, and it was approved an anonymous and randomized business survey of our community. And so, we have Peter Leatherman from Morris Leatherman Company here this evening to give you those results. But just briefly, before we start that, I'm just going to give you a little bit of a recap and overview of where we are since the pandemic started last year. Last year, staff did administer a small business loan program, and we gave out $843,000 in CARE Act, CARES Act funding to over 150 businesses. Staff also created a business resource page, and really, that was just to centralize information and resources for businesses, so there's one place for them to go. We have had the Open to Business Program for a number of years. We partner with MCCD in Hennepin County on that program. But we also do have a number of other programs that Hennepin County has that are free programs. Elevate Business came out of CARES Act funding as well. It has over 20 local organizations that provide technical services, and this is virtually unlimited assistance to any business in Hennepin County. We also have the CEO Next Program. This is an eight-month program for growing and expanding businesses. The next cohort starts the end of October next month. But last month, we had one of our own businesses that completed the program, system for Minnesota. And so, really excited to have an opportunity like that, and that's really what I'm looking for in this community, to help keep our businesses here and grow and expand them. Hennepin County also has recycling and waste prevention grants, all the way up to $50,000. A new grant program just came out from Deed. They have another $64 million to give Minnesota-owned businesses. Those are businesses that are affected by the pandemic. That application process is going to open in two weeks, and they have $10,000 to $15,000 grants for businesses on that. That one is called Minnesota Main Street COVID Relief Grants. And then, with these grants, over the years, city staff has partnered with many businesses to acquire funding and help out businesses, such as Toro Companies with their expansion, Polar Semiconductor, and also the construction of the new SIC headquarters, currently under construction. And staff also received a recent grant for funding for VEEP, for housing assistance, and also clues, or excuse me, for food shelf assistance, and clues for housing assistance. We also have a group of five city staff that are taking a course at the University of Minnesota Expansion Campus. It's business retention and expansion, with the goal, when we're complete, is to begin a business retention and expansion plan for the entire community, and what that looks like moving forward into the future. Right now, staff are having a number of conversations with different organizations, anything from site acquisitions to grants, financing, highlighting BIPOC-owned businesses with feature stories. We're connecting with the Mall of America, the Bloomington Chamber, and also the Bloomington Visitor and Convention Bureau on that. And then, the Council has also set aside $500,000 of ARP funding for a neighborhood development center. So, staff is involved in all these different activities, where we're just really looking to align what we're doing with what the Racial Equity Economic Development Steering Committee is doing, and then also with the City Council's priorities of developing neighborhood commercial nodes and also diversifying our local economy. So, in addition to that, the Community Development Department also has their REIT team, the Racial Equity Action Teams, and they also have identified priorities for business engagement. So, all these priorities are coming together, where then we'll be looking at recommendations in the future to come back to this group. So, tonight, we're just looking at, taking a look at the survey, what are initial reactions, what's unique about the results, just getting those reactions from this body here this evening. So, with that, I'm going to have Peter Leatherman come up, and he's going to present the survey results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leather, good. Matt Leatherman, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, in person. The PowerPoint going to, will I see it here, or? If not, I can just operate off of this. Here we go. Perfect. If we go to the first slide, just to refresh everybody with what we undertook for the city, we spoke with 400 randomly selected owners or chief decision-makers of Bloomington business. The surveys were conducted between June 1st and July 16th. It took a while on this survey, multiple factors, and we've learned as a company now probably don't do summer surveys in the middle of a pandemic, when employers are having difficulties trying to find people to work for them at the start of the summer. It wasn't that people were unwilling to take the survey, there were numerous appointments. And in the midst of this, we had the very odd 4th of July, where it was on a Saturday, so half the owners were off the week before, half the owners were off the week after. So, we did complete 400 randomly selected across the community. Average interview time was 20 minutes. I was curious how many people stay on the phone with us for over 45 minutes, and there were 7% of the business owners on this one. 29 stayed on for 45 minutes, and you've probably heard from all of them at some point. A lot of history and a lot of additional verbatim, shall we say. The non-response rate was 5.5%, and with a 400 sample, as long as, you know, we've included everybody in the sample, we feel confident it's within plus or minus 5% in 95 out of 100 cases. That's the statistical caveat with a 400 sample. So, I thought I'd go through some of the demographics and just show you the profile of the business community from the summer. First off, how long has the business been in the city of Bloomington? You can see 53% had been in the community for 16 years or longer. A third have been in the community for over 20 years. The median comes in right at about 17 years, 17.2 roughly. And obviously, with the pandemic, this is going to impact the number. Not a lot of new businesses opened in the last two years in any community across the country. If we look at the next slide, we asked folks to tell us what sort of business they operated. Now, there are many have multifaceted and that sort of thing, but we try to categorize it into one category. 24% indicated their primary mode of business was retail. 22% was restaurant. 15% was personal service. 9% professional service. 7% manufacturing. 6% medical and healthcare. 5% automotive. 4% construction. 3% hospitality. 2% technology. And 3% scattered. If we continue with the demographics, we asked for a location, and we gave them some locations in the community and said, you know, what would best describe your area. 21% said they were on Lyndale Avenue area. 494 on the Strip, 19%. 17% Old Shakopee Road. 11% in the Mall of America itself. 10% Penn American. And then, you can see the other five categories coming in at single digits. 25% indicated that they owned their current building, their business was located in, while 75% were tenants. 4% indicated that they were home-based business. If we look at the next slide, the number of employees, the first portion, the first, the top of this chart, is a number of full-time employees. 4% indicated they had no full-time employees. It was only a part-time company. 63% had between 1 and 10 employees, while you had 8% that had over 50 employees, full time. What about part-time employees? 17% had no part-time employees. Just over half had 1 to 10 part-time employees, and you can see then that we had 31% that had 11 or more part-time employees. What about the age of the business owner or manager? 38% were under the age of 39. 58% majority between 40 and 64. 4% over the age of 65, and a lot of us telling, telling us that they were hoping to retire very soon. And then, the ethnicity was asked of the owner and manager. Two-thirds indicated that they were white. 16% black or African-American. 6% each Latino or Asian. 2% American Indian or Alaskan Native. 1% Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. And 3% refused. Finally, on the demographics, we asked the gender identity. 58% said they were male. 41% female. 1% non-binary. And then, we controlled by the ZIP codes. From the list, we knew the number of houses or businesses in each ZIP code. Three ZIP codes make up approximately 3/4 of the sample, with 420, 425, and 431, and then ZIP code 55437 being the only one in double digits. So, before I go into the actual survey results, any questions on methodology, the demographics, or anything from the survey? All right. Survey says, simple question upfront, open-ended, why did you move, why did you decide to open a business in Bloomington? It's a typical real estate answer of location, location, location. 37% indicated that was the primary reason. 20% said there was space available for the type of business they were looking at. 14% customer base. 12% said it was a corporate decision. 8% close to home. 5% bought existing. And 4% lived in Bloomington. Now, we decided in doing the survey, let's just hit COVID upfront. Let's have this discussion, so it's not kind of lingering on and having business owners and managers sit and wait for us to ask questions. And also, then, they can focus on other things once you've had the discussion about COVID and its impact. So, first off, what is their sense of the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on their business? Not surprising, it's had a significant impact. Half, 50% indicate it's had a major impact. 30% a minor impact, and 20% not much of an impact. So, about four out of five businesses indicate they've been impacted. Now, we then asked if they said major or minor, what, how has the business been impacted? First off, on overall revenue, 90% of businesses said it had decreased during the pandemic. 6% said it remains the same, and 3% said it had increased. What about the number of customers? 83% said that it had decreased. 11% said it remained the same, and 6% said it increased. What about the number of workers that they have? 3/4 indicate that had decreased over the pandemic, while 25% indicated it remained the same. And the productivity of employees, actually had 16%. One in six businesses actually said it increased. 27% indicated a decrease, and 46% said it remained the same. So, the impact is, you know, four out of five businesses have felt the impact, and the impact has been focused on multiple portions for all these businesses, from revenue to the number of customers and then to the number of workers. Now, one question that's been going on, as we sort of come out of the pandemic, is, are people going to go back to work the way it was before? So, we asked the question, have you had to change where and how employees worked during the pandemic? 51% indicated yes, they had. Now, obviously, if you're a hotel, you really can't change where your employees work. If you're a restaurant, those sorts of things. So, 51% have made the decision to change how employees work. Then, we followed up with that group and asked, do you believe that you will operate your business the way it was before the pandemic? 80% basically said, yes, we will go back to normal. 12% said no, and 9% are unsure at this point in time. So, if we look at a whole for the community, it's 21% if we combine the known and the unsure, not sure what's going to happen in the future. 20% of the 50%, it's about 10% of all businesses in the community might not go back to work the way it was before. It's not going to be the third, it's not going to be the 50% that people talk about. It's probably about 1 in 10 that probably will actually reorganize the way they do things. Now, having put aside the COVID discussion, and they've been able to talk about the impact, we then ask and have people consider the business climate as a whole. How do they feel? And this is in the month of June, the first part of July. They feel very positive about the building, the business climate. 92% rated favorably. 34% rated excellent. And 8% rated only fair or poor. Very strong rating, especially on the excellent. Minnesotans are terribly difficult graders. They don't get excited about a lot, and we don't like to say anything's excellent when we can say it's good. It's just a simple Minnesotan thing. To have a third of business owners actually say the climate is excellent is very strong. Before the pandemic, the norm, and that's about 25%, and what we've seen in all the research that we've done, looking at residents' attitudes and opinions and everything, enthusiasm has dropped across the board on multitude of things. So, that 34% is comparatively very strong.
Do you have any benchmarks on that with respect to surrounding communities? I mean, have you asked these same questions and same kind of response, or?
We have in the sense, but I don't want to make an apples-to-apples comparison simply because of the pandemic. So, we don't have that apples-to-apples comparison since the pandemic has been undertaken.
But if you would generalize without the pandemic.
It's.
Bloomington is very favorable with these numbers. Have other communities had the same kind of response?
They've had less excellent ratings before the pandemic, which is, makes this striking in the sense that, as I said, that the norm on this is about 25% excellent before the pandemic. You have a third with the pandemic. Now, I can only assume that communities, the excellent rate is going to go down, so we don't know what yours was before, in a sense.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Open-ended question, is there anything the city could do to improve the business climate? Well, right at the bottom, no. Two-thirds say we're good. It really comes down to, as you look at this data as a whole, and you're going to see it as we go through this, people feel really good about city government, the city of Bloomington itself, and they're optimistic about the future. There's not like one magic bullet that needs to be fixed, you know, a serious problem out there that's going to make everybody happy, because overall, people are happy. This is kind of, you know, for the older folks who had the stereos with the equalizers where you had to actually sit and play with, this is kind of what you're dealing with. You have some issues that impact other businesses, some businesses, and others that don't impact, and it's just kind of fine-tuning the sound of the business climate. So, you have 6% say lower taxes. I will say that that is a third of what it typically was before the pandemic, that normally in a business survey is 20%. 3%, and they're very, very adamant on allowing signs. A lot of that over 45-minute group was in signage. 2% wanted more redevelopment. 2% tax incentives. 2% employee training. 1% wanted less city spending. But overall, between the uncertainty and the know, about 8 in 10 businesses couldn't think of anything in an open-ended question about how to improve the business climate. Now, this is very hopeful, that there's an intensity in the optimism of the future of the businesses in Bloomington. 58% indicate they're very optimistic. A total of 90% say they're optimistic. Only 8% say they're not too or not very optimistic, and 2% were unsure. So, and this one varies all over the place, and you also have built in here, you know, in thinking about this and the timing, the businesses that were really struggling going through the pandemic at the start probably weren't around to be in the sample. These are kind of, these are the businesses that have survived during the pandemic, and even you could see the impact of the pandemic, but there is a lot of optimism about the future. Well, just like when we ask about, what could the city do to improve the business climate? What about, what do they think the most serious issue is facing the business community? And with COVID put off to the side, we've discussed it, half the people couldn't think of anything else. 15% said they were unsure, and once again, we get to the stereo equalizer. 7% talked about a lack of employees, and that was a very adamant group that month of June. 5% talked about the lack of customers. Then, we had traffic congestion, the poor economy, high taxes, transportation costs, competition, the signage, violent crime, and a high rent and lease. But once again, there's not anything in an open-ended question, we always say, if you have 20%, 1 in 5 people coalescing around one response in an open-ended question like this, that it's a concern, a significant concern in the community. You don't have anything that hits double digits.
Peter, if I could, just ask a quick question. Were you able to break down even further within this, or could you, so could you say which industries said lack of employees?
Yes.
Which industry said competition and so on? Were you able to do that?
Yeah. And we can, with the cross tabs, do the banners, and all those demographics you saw upfront, we can cut all the questions that way, so we can look at the areas of the business, is there a location in the city, all of those sorts of things, we can look at more in depth.
Because I think that would be useful to know. I mean, are we saying, is it the hospitality industry? Is it the high-tech industry? All those, where do we need to work to beef up our number of employees in the city?
Absolutely. Yeah. That will be included in the final report.
Thank you.
So, we went through, we asked them the open-ended, they can tell us anything on the most serious issue, and then we came back and asked them a closed-ended list. And we asked them simply for each of the following, please tell me if it's a very serious issue, somewhat serious issue, or not a serious issue for your business. So, whatever rate on this chart is the very and the somewhat serious, not the not serious, and also a rate from the intense, the very serious. One item has 92% saying that it is a serious issue, with 37% saying a very serious issue, and that's the general economic conditions. Then, we drop down to 64% saying a serious issue, with 23% very serious, and that's the cost of doing business. Everything else then gets to about 50% serious, and about 1 in 10 people indicating that it's a very serious issue, whether it's traffic congestion, crime, access to capital, public transportation. But really, the number-one driver for the seriousness of the issue is something that's really out of the city's control and actually the businesses' control. It's the general economic conditions in the state and in the country. Now, we then turned and asked about full-time employees. And we asked, have the number of employees during the past 25 years, 24 months, increased, decreased, or remained about the same? You can see the impact of the pandemic on this one. 6% said they'd actually increased the number of employees. 36% indicate that it had decreased. 57% about the same. Now, how do they feel as they move forward in the next 24 months, though? You can see it reverses. You now have 32% indicating that they believe that full-time employment will increase, 8% decrease, and 49% will be this, they'll have the same number of full-time employees. So, it's kind of going to be a catch-up then, of what the impact of the recession, the anticipation is, is going to be a catch-up in the next 24 months to get back to where it was back February of 2020. We asked businesses.
It would be interesting on that to look, you had 7% that said, lack of employees was really a big deal. It would be interesting to take and look at that in the context of your last slide, what they plan to do, what they have done, and what they're going to do.
Right.
Because, I mean, if they're, I would expect that that group would be hiring even more.
And in the comments that came up on the lack of employees, that 7% or 8% and everything, was very much focused on specific. was very much focused on specific types of employees. It wasn't that it was the, and we're going to have, there's a slide coming up on quantity versus quality. Uh, but if they said that it was a concern on lack of employees, it was a lack on the quantity, or I'm sorry, the quality of the employee, because they're looking for specific skill sets instead of just numbers.
Well, that really opens the whole thing up about how the city cooperates with, let's say, norm and the elementary technical colleges and the high schools. Really, and do what we can do to take and and increase that flow. So that's a, it's a very important thing to look at.
Does the business offer health insurance? About sixty-two percent indicated that they did, thirty-eight percent said no. We followed up with those that said yes and asked the type of employee that was offered health insurance. And that's what's arrayed in the upper right-hand corner. So ninety-five percent in the sixty-two percent, full-time salary, ninety-five percent were offered health insurance. Full-time hourly, eighty-eight percent, and part-time employees, fifteen percent were offered health insurance. What about paid sick leave? Fifty-two percent indicated that they did offer paid sick leave. Forty-eight percent said, no, they did not. Of the fifty-two percent, ninety-four percent indicated that they gave it to full-time salaried, ninety percent to full-time hourly, and fifty-two percent to part-time employees. So about two-thirds of the of businesses are offering health insurance themselves to employees, and about half are offering paid sick leave. This is where I talked about the the rating of the labor pool. Eighty-six percent rated excellent on the quality. Eighty-two percent rate the quantity as excellent. Thirteen percent rated the quality only fair or poor. Seventeen percent rated the, uh, quantity only fair or poor. In looking at this, um, and I, because I was curious, that seven percent that said lack of employees and everything, like I mentioned, it was the quality focus, because they had specific things they were looking for. On this one, um, you know, the key is going to be, you have about a quarter that say it's excellent. Ideally, you don't have to make people think that or or change people's opinions that it's favorable. You want them to have strong favorable, to move from good to excellent, because it's fifty-four and sixty-two percent saying good, landing on the softer response. What's the most important skill or competency? When they're looking for employees? Well, one in an open-ended question gets a flat majority. You can see then that that is a very, uh, powerful competency that they're looking at. Now, they could say ten. We're coding the number one thing they say. Fifty-two percent say customer service. Twelve percent say work ethic. Nine percent talk about an attention to details. Eight percent specific trade skills. Five percent communication, four percent promptness, four percent, uh, five percent promptness, four percent sales, three percent technology. But one dominates at the top of what they're looking for for skills and competency. Now, what employment skills and competencies need to be improved for the future? At the bottom, one in five say they didn't see any gaps in the skills, uh, that pretty much was matching up with their needs. Uh, you do have, though, six that are in the high single digits to almost twenty percent. Promptness, um, leads the list at eighteen percent. And this is open-ended, they can tell us anything. Fourteen percent talk specifically about communication, organization, customer service, attention to details, and being a team player are areas to focus on in the community. Is the availability of housing a problem for the retention and recruitment of employees at your business? No, it's it's not seen as an issue amongst the business owners and managers. Uh, doesn't necessarily, they're potentially aware away from those needs. Not so much aware, but nine out of ten say, no, that's not an issue. Uh, two percent, uh, indicated that affordable, uh, housing. Uh, five percent were unsure, and two percent said scattered types of housing. Um, so once again, though, this is the owner or manager, not the employee responding. Similarly, traffic congestion. One in three business owners or managers thought that, uh, the traffic congestion had impacted their business, thirty-five percent. We follow up with that thirty-five percent and ask, who has it impacted? Has it impacted your employees? Has it impacted your customers or clients, or has it impacted both? The impact is both. Two-thirds say both have been impacted. Um, eighty-five percent say it's impacting customers and clients if we add those two together, and seventy-nine percent employees. Um, so of the third, it's across the board, the impact of traffic congestion. Once again, these are business owners and managers. Do they believe that Bloomington has enough public transportation options? Yes. Ninety-four percent indicate yes, only one percent of them said no. Um, those that said no, we're talking five people, um, indicated that, um, it was, uh, it was primarily impacting customers and clients versus employees. Moving into the city enterprise itself. Overall, how do the owners and managers feel, uh, the cities? How would they rate the city's attitudes and responsiveness towards local business? Uh, ninety percent rated favorably, ten percent rated only fair or poor. Very strong rating. The norm before the pandemic on this one was eighty-two percent. So you're higher than the pre-pandemic norm. Um, and on this one, there always tends to be less excellent rating on this one, um, simply because, and even when you talk about a residential survey, the feeling on the the attitude and responsiveness of the city is often impacted not whether they had the possibility to be lis- or listened to, but whether you did what they wanted you to do. Um, it's the difference between having your say and having your way. So that kind of impacts enthusiasm on an excellent rating on this question. How do they feel about, excuse me, the mayor and city council? First off, and we'll see it with the last chart. People are paying attention, business owners and managers in this community. You have fifty-seven percent say that, they're not saying that they have a lot, that they follow your work a lot. But you have fifty-seven percent that say that that some, uh, uh, follow the work. Um, only forty-three percent say not too, not too much or not at all. Typically, that's inverse, especially in the business community. You might have thirty to forty percent indicating a lot or some. Um, perhaps this is pandemic-based, uh, but this on the the business community, uh, this is like a fishbowl for them to watch. Now, oftentimes, the higher amounts of information, the more they follow, sometimes doesn't breed positive feelings. In this case, they do. Seventy-four percent rate the work of the city, mayor and city council positively. Twenty-three percent rate it, uh, only fair or poor. If we look at city hall, uh, during the pandemic, so this was framed up in the past year. Uh, so twenty-three percent indicated that they had some, had some sort of contact with city hall. Were they satisfied or dissatisfied with that, um, uh, contact? Eighty-seven percent indicated that they were satisfied, ten percent dissatisfied. And of the ten percent dissatisfied, um, basically, a third said no action was taken. Uh, a third said they weren't listened to, and a third said they didn't get any response. Um, so you really have then about two or, you, it, the community as a whole, about three percent, um, that is based on they didn't get the response. The rest are basically didn't go with, that they didn't get the result they were hoping for. Overall, then, do they think things are headed in the right direction or off on the wrong track? And enthusiastic, and this kind of goes back to their feeling on the business climate, too. Eighty-seven percent believe the city is moving in a positive direction. Only six percent say it's on the wrong track. The focus on the wrong track, track, what, keep in mind, this is six, uh, uh, six percent, it's twenty-four people. Uh, half of them pointed to crime, and half of them pointed to high taxes. The question, where the rubber hits the road, in my opinion, this is an important question, because you ask folks, when you consider the property taxes you pay and the city quality of city services you receive, how do you rate that value? Um, and you can see, you actually had eighty-two percent rate the value positively. Only fourteen percent rated on on only fair or poor. Um, once again, there's a lot more good than excellent. There's always going to be on this one, because you're inserting property taxes at this point in time. And there's a reason also that we ask this as a four, four-part scale, four-point scale, because in Minnesota, if you give them the middle of the road, they'll tip. We want to push them, because you've, we say that y- you feel a little bit positive or a little bit negative. You can see the overwhelmingly tip to the to the positive. We went through a list then and asked, um, for each of these items, please tell me if the city should have a great focus, some focus, little focus, or no focus on that item. Um, what I've arrayed is great and some. Uh, first off, if you look at just do the big picture on this, uh, the city should focus on all of these things. Uh, you have flat majorities, uh, the lowest number is sixty-four percent, uh, indicating great or some. Now, obviously, you can't do all. Um, and so in looking at the blue, in looking at the intensity, the great versus some, two really rise to the top to focus on. And and all of this will depend on funding and timing and everything like this. But retaining and growing existing businesses, uh, eighty, uh, ninety-nine percent said the city should focus on it. Seven out of ten business owners and managers said that. And then ninety-five percent talk about recruiting new businesses, sixty-three percent a great focus. And once again, this goes back to, if we go back to the most serious issue and everything like that, it's not like there's a priority, you need to do this. This, the the more you focus on these sorts of things, you're you're balancing that, the the sound in the city of the business climate. But you also then can impact, you don't have to, you you don't have a large group of people feeling unhappy, uh, of business owners and managers. The the goal for the city moving forward, we, how do you make them go from favorable to enthusiastic? The good to the excellent, the agree to the strongly agree should be the goal moving forward. You don't have to change people's minds. And then always, the most important thing to put things in, uh, perspective is, do people think they're informed? Because if they don't think they're all that informed, then a lot of their opinions might not be, they're going to be opinions more than, um, their experiences. You have an extraordinarily high level of business owners and managers saying they're at least somewhat informed about city government. It's three, uh, s- uh, three-quarters, uh, with one in five indicating that they're very informed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, that was always, as always, good information, fascinating stuff, and appreciate the the depth and the and the breadth that you went into with this, uh, and I understand, I I fully understand how difficult it must have been, especially during this summer, uh, just to get people to respond, so well done with that, appreciate that.
And it wasn't just business. Parents were tough for us, I mean, everybody was tough to get on the phone. It's not that they didn't want to talk to us, it's that they never were available.
Understood.
Yeah.
City council, any questions? Councilmember Loman?
I mean, those are some fantastic results, uh, from that that survey. Um, and I guess one of the things, and maybe maybe you covered this one, and I missed it, uh, but in terms of the randomization of this, because some folks look at this and say, wow, it's only four hundred, uh, uh, folks, uh, that that did this, uh, survey. Can you talk a little bit about about that, um, in terms of, you know, how this relates to how many businesses we have in the community? And and, um, how statistically significant this would be if we look at this?
Correct. When you're, when you're dealing with statistics, and, uh, my business partner was my college professor, everything, he could do a, you know, well, he taught me for an entire semester on statistics. So the 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 show, I'll I'll do a a condensed version of it. Um, the size of the sample, it doesn't matter the proportionality to the population. So a four hundred sample of the business community of, uh, in Bloomington, a four hundred sample of the residents in Bloomington is going to be plus or minus five percent, as long as everybody has an equal chance to be included. Uh, as a proportion here, off the top of my head, I think there were approximately three thousand businesses. I'm looking at bar, we worked the list, right, right around that was the number. With, you you do have something that's called a small sample correction in statistics, that if your universe is less than two thousand, you don't have to talk to as many people to achieve a similar margin of error, which means, you know, if you had fifteen hundred, yeah, I'd have to do the small sample correction. You might have to talk to three hundred and twenty-five to get to plus or minus five percent. But since the universe was over two thousand, that four hundred sample is plus or minus five percent, uh, just like it would be for the residents overall. It's it's statistics on that one.
I happen to love that kind of thing. One other question I had, in terms of the available, availability of the housing, the way that that question was asked, uh, I wonder if the question was presented in a different way, if we would have got a different result? Because it wasn't clear to me, just from reading that question off the slide, if that re, you know, related to, you know, just the managers themselves or to their employees.
It was, I could, I could read you the specific wording. It wa- it was to the employees, but like I always say that, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't know where all my employees at the issues in that sense. I would like to. Um, the specific question is, do you think the availability of housing in Bloomington is a problem for the retention and recruitment of employees at your business? And then if they say yes, then we ask, what type of housing would you like to see made available in the city?
Thanks for clarifying that. And I want to wonder if you, if you asked that question of the employees, if that response would be different. Uh, but, I mean, that's not what we're we're doing here, but.
No, I I guarantee, and and that's not a comment, especially on those, you know, when you look at housing, when you look at traffic, when you look at public transit, uh, when we're doing a survey of business owners and managers, and whether it's for a city, but, I mean, we did a lot of work with the business partnership through the years across the state, doing surveys and everything like that. There's a disconnect on those issues from the top to the employees, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any board authority questions? Commissioner Hunt?
My question on the, the, um, on the breakout of the business owners, are the businesses by zip codes? It seemed like predominantly five-five-four-three-one and east. Was that just the nature of the sampling, or why, why so much fewer in the further western zip codes?
With with the list we had, we had specific numbers within each zip code.
Okay.
That's the one thing that I controlled for, is I wanted to make sure, so I I I knew in, let me just pull up. I don't remember all the zip codes. So in five, in in four-two-oh, it was twenty-eight percent of the sample. So from the list that we got of businesses, twenty-eight percent were in four-two-oh. It's, that's based on, that's the one thing that I controlled for, to make sure that you can have a balance across the community by location, that there won't be any bias in that.
Well, in your thought, as as you pulled the sample size, you're thinking it was a representative of sample, a good, solid representation of businesses across the entire city?
Geographically.
Geographically.
Yeah, and when we do residence, uh, I always control by ward or precinct, depending on that, because we know those numbers. Um, so that, and then, so I set a quota for it to make sure that, I guarantee that that is, because you could have a random sample where you had seventy-five percent of businesses, um, in one zip code, or seventy-five percent of residents. But if I set quotas within it, and then let, on this one, I didn't control for it. The other thing we control for is gender on residential surveys. Because if we didn't control for gender, it would be seventy-five percent female, um, because men don't answer the phone. So those are the two things I do is location and gender. But on this one, I couldn't control gender. It was what it was.
Any other questions, anything else? If not, thank you. Fascinating still, oh, I'm I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Nelson, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I can't believe you didn't expect that I'd have questions. Um, so just a a couple of quick things. Um, we just talked about the zip codes, and you controlled for those. Um, in your opinion, were the other demographics in terms of size of companies, in terms of industries, things of that nature consistent with what we see as representative of the companies and businesses within Bloomington?
That's the one thing, on on this, there's no census data. Like on a residential survey, I could go into the census and say, I could look at ethnicity, I could look at households with children, stuff like that. Um, on this one, uh, it, I, we don't know. Like, I asked the city if there was any awareness on the ethnicity. Um, and so, uh, we had no expectation for what it was.
Okay. Any insight? Okay. Any insight in terms of other surveys? Does it seem at least insistent with that?
Other surveys?
Uh, for other cities. I mean, it, was there anything that stood out in terms of any of the demographics that was, that doesn't seem reasonable, or that, I mean, was, was it all what you'd expect, I guess?
It would be within the parameters, from what I know about Bloomington. I mean, not every city has one in five businesses being restaurants. Yeah, i- i- in that sense. So there, there'd be that expectation. Retail at twenty-four percent, you have the Mall of America in play. So, I mean, yeah, all of those things. And, and that's why it's hard to do that apples-to-apples comparison, just in the difference of the demographics.
That's fair. Um, one of the items that you highlighted or emphasized in your comments was sign ordinance. Was there anything in particular with regards to that that came out of these results? Or maybe that's a detail that we want to get into further at a different time?
It is, for, for some reason, on sides, it's small. I mean, I think it was three percent or four percent. But in every community on sides, these tend to be the loudest. And so it depends on whether they want the bigger sign, the taller sign, they want shorter signs, they want this. There's, you know, but you're only talking at this point in time about ten to twelve people. But they just feel passionately about their position on signage.
Okay. They should get some signs and raise them up so we can see that.
Not too tall.
Last question I have is, um, there was a, a significant difference between, um, uh, various criteria for full-time versus part-time employees in terms of what they received and things like that. Uh, is that typical in surveys that you see? Is that, um, is there anything that, that should raised to our awareness about that in terms of part-time employees and, and what they're receiving versus full-time employees?
What they're, oh, on, uh, pay, on, on health insurance and paid sick leave?
Correct, yeah.
I, nothing unusual from what I've seen from other cities. I, I, I was actually surprised, I guess, that you actually had a majority of, of those that were offering paid sick leave were offering it to part-time employees. I believe, I, I don't have the, I believe it was fifty-two percent of part-time employees. Now keep in mind, that's fifty-two percent of fifty-two percent. Uh, so, but that's a quarter of the part-time employees in play. Not surprised on the health insurance. I think the health insurance being offered to part-time employees was just around ten percent off the top of my head. But I was surprised that half were offering paid sick, uh, time, or sa, uh, sick leave to part-time employees.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate the time and opportunity to ask some questions.
Thanks.
Counsel, if there are no further questions, I.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Oluga.
Uh, thank you. Hard to see with so many people on the screen, one hand, so. Uh, Mr. Leatherman, uh, thanks for the information. Uh, I've got a sort of an interesting question for you, and that is, in taking this whole survey in its entirety, and if our council wanted to have a single initiative directed to business, what do you think would be most responsive to the respondents in this survey? As that initiative?
Wow. Take a hundred questions, synthesize it down. Boy.
And, and that's really the value of this process, right?
Yeah.
Is, is, uh, what's the most important thing we should be focused on?
A- absolutely.
And frankly, I, I'm having trouble sorting that out. So that's why I ask you.
Absolutely. And it, it, it's a fair question. The issue is, is there are no, outside of the pandemic, there's no major problems i- in the sense in the minds of business community. Are there issues? Yes. But are they single-digit? It, you know, there's not one thing that you go on and say, okay, you need to do something about this, like we've seen in other communities. Whether it's roads, it's safety, it's those sorts of things. Is there one thing? There's, there's not one thing in that sense. There's also not a high level of people that think things are going poorly, are off on the wrong track. And so it becomes a difference in the goal of the, the city enterprises. You don't have to make people think something's good that they think is bad. You have to make them think what's good is excellent. And the factor, when we went through that list of the most serious issue, being general economic conditions, makes it then harder to point at, okay, for the city to do. Let, let me, we're, we're gonna write a report. I want to do some answers, it's called answer tree, where we factor in and bring in all the multiple variables and stuff, and try to come up with, you know, this is going to potentially push the buttons of those that say something's good. Let's take out the excellent. Let's focus on those that say good, only fair, poor. And are there issues that rise to the top? One or two that provide some sort of synthesis to get the, to give the city some direction on it?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Look forward to that report.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had a, just a really quick question, and I don't think I saw this in there. But, um, did you ask any questions that were specifically around what we're doing well? Like what people appreciate, what business owners are appreciating? So Barb started off with listing all of these efforts that we have underway, especially since COVID hit. And I'm just curious, as we think about the results and we see that, I mean, business owners have a pretty positive experience owning and operating businesses in Bloomington. And so it makes me wonder what we're doing really well, that we really need to keep doing, and then, like you said, go from good to excellent or to enthusiastic. Um, and, and I don't recall the question, and I couldn't pull it up because I kicked myself off the.
I, I don't think we hit anything specifically on that. Um, I did, I was gonna mention this upfront. For the sake of time, I did take out about fifteen slides, because I think it was like at forty-seven or forty-eight slides. So I tried to pare it back a little bit, um, in that sense. Um, but no, I don't think we did ask something that specific about what you're doing well. We tend to always set up, if only fair or poor, why?
Yeah.
If wrong track, why? To focus on that instead of, um.
Well, assuming that we would do this survey again in the future, I would be really interested to know what are those things that the business owners really appreciate and that we can keep doing. And, because I think sometimes we might hear from one person and think it might be a huge problem, and it's not really, right? And, um, so. I appreciate, um, the presentation though, and it's really exciting to see these results. So thank you.
Peterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I guess you're Mr. President. The, one, one question I have around these results is, and thinking about other communities where you have a strong suburb that has a history of supporting businesses next to a large city, that, you know, honestly, in the last couple of years, has had some issues with, with business-related things. Do you ever see situations where, where in the survey results that you see here, people are liking it because there's a contrast? And see something like that? Because that's, because quite honestly, that could be an effect that I'm thinking about here. And so, um, part of me wants to, to understand if you've seen that before, so that I don't go strutting around and saying, oh, boy, we got these great results. But it's only because, you know, my, my car has, has two hubcaps on it because my neighbors has none, kind of situation.
As a business owner, manager in Minneapolis, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's a, I don't think we can quantify that. I would love for a city to authorize me to ask that question. How do you rate your business community in comparison to Minneapolis? Or St. Paul? I think that'd be a fantastic. Uh, quite, just, just to understand. Uh, but don't think we could actually quantify it. I, I would think it's, I think there, I, I think it's safe to say there would be spillover. There's spillover, we know on crime, um, on, on that one. And so amongst business owners and managers, I think it would be safe to say, can we quantify what that percent is? I can't. But I, I, I think it's very safe to say that you do have, um, some spillover based on what the comparisons could be.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President. So, so piggybacking on that, I mean, the question may be, how do we compare to other communities? And then in thinking back how location was a really primary example, is that, and I don't know that it delved into the why the location, that could be potentially.
It, it could be with the location, though, and keep in mind, would we, the issues in Minneapolis are more recent?
No, I get that.
Yeah. And so, but we, we have very little business come in in the last couple of years for that, for that location to play in. Yeah.
And, and when we're coming, it was surprising, it's probably one of the slides you removed, but the, um, one, Barb, Ms. Wolf had mentioned the, the number of services that we have available to businesses as a city. And I was surprised, quite honestly, that the really high response of businesses that we're aware of, I think open to business is one of the slides.
Yes.
I was, I was really taken aback by that because, you know, I, I think a lot of people don't know about that or some of the benefits that the city actually has. So I was really surprised at that response.
Yeah, just for, I, I did take, yeah. Prior to the survey, were you aware of the city's MCCD Open to Business Program, offering technical and financial assistance to all businesses in Bloomington? Sixty-four percent said yes. But goes back to the, the, uh, you had seventy-three or seventy-four percent indicating that they were very somewhat informed about the city government. So you can see that.
Sorry.
You, you, you can see how that impacts, and if you have a broad info, high level of information, it can get down to the specifics. But oftentimes, especially when you're talking about specific programs and that sort of thing, there tends to be attrition because people aren't necessarily focused on everything. I thought that was a startling result, too. Absolutely.
Counsel, and Port, I appreciate this discussion, but I, I want to channel my inner Robert Frost and say we've got miles to go before we sleep yet tonight. If there are no further questions, uh, counsel, I would look for a motion to accept the business survey result and request a business survey final report.
So move.
Second?
And a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Carter from the City Council to accept the survey and request a final report. No further council discussion? Carolyn?
Mayor, I actually have one question, one more. If I can.
Councilmember Nelson?
You don't have to call me. Uh, just a quick thought, um, is similar to Commissioner Peterson's question, I believe. How do you believe that the pandemic has impacted the results of other things? I mean, we saw an overwhelming number of people saying the general economic conditions were the most concerning. Absent that, what might we have expected? And I know you won't have specific data points, but I would expect some of those other concerns to have risen up more. But in a bad economy, like, they're overshadowed by a pandemic. So I, I'm struggling to figure, trying to understand how to interpret those results, given the severity of that pandemic.
I would, though, advise you on that list where we went through and asked, is this a very serious, somewhat serious? It wasn't in comparison to the others. They could have said they all were very serious. Um, and so, um, just because you said very serious on general economic conditions, if the economy was good, I would not assume that other things would have gone up, because it wasn't an either-or, they had the potential to say all of these are a problem.
Great. Thank you. That's fantastic information. I appreciate that.
Counsel, any additional questions? We have a motion and a second to accept this report and to request a formal final report. No further questions. Carolyn?
Oluga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussi?
Aye. Motion carries seven, zero.
And I would understand a similar motion for the Board of Authority.
Who moves?
Commissioner Hunt moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter? Carolyn, any further questions? Carolyn, you want to call the roll? Bussi?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Very good. Peter, thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you all.
It was a pleasure, uh, having you here. Thanks for your work with us. Look forward to the final report.
Absolutely. Appreciate it all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Item two point two, the Riverview Corridor Project Update. I know many of you heard this, have heard me say this before, but I, I spent five years working on the Green Line at the University of Minnesota, which is what got me into the Riverview Corridor. And Mark Berners-Lee, when he asked if I would participate in this, he said, it'll be like four or five meetings tops. And I served on, uh, I, I'm still serving, that was nine years ago, literally nine years ago. So this is, uh, one of those career makers. So Julie Long from our engineering department. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, hopefully some of you have taken the Route fifty-four bus and can have similar stories to the mayor. Tonight, we have two guests online to give us a Riverview Corridor update. It's Jennifer Jordan and Kevin Roganbuck from Ramsey County. The Riverview Corridor is the third leg of the Transit Triangle and would go from the Mall of America to the airport to downtown St. Paul. I see Jennifer and. I believe they're both, they will both be presenting. Jennifer, do you know if Kevin?
There's Kevin.
Oh, there's Kevin.
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Welcome.
Jennifer, Kevin, good evening. Welcome. Kevin, good to see you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Please, the floor is yours.
Okay, great. Um, well, I know that we have a PowerPoint to go along, and it's in your packets. So if that could be queued up, that would be good.
I'm sorry, Jennifer. I thought you, either you or Kevin were going to present the PowerPoint.
You know what? I, I have it up. I can go ahead and, um, share it. So I'm, I'm ready to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Are you all able to see the PowerPoint?
Do not see it yet.
Okay. How about now?
Not now. Oh, wait, here it comes.
It's starting to come.
Okay. All right. All right. So you're able to see?
It hasn't fully shared. Oh, there it has. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, so thank you so much for having Kevin and I. I'm Jennifer Jordan with Ramsey County, Transportation Planner. How we'll do this is we'll just kind of give you kind of a brief overview of the project, bring you up to speed, refresh your memories on it, and talk about kind of the work that we've been doing this past year and the phase that we're in. And then I'll turn it over to Kevin to talk about specifically community engagement and communications pieces of the project.
Jennifer, can I interrupt one more time, please? Um, it isn't in presentation mode, it's in regular PowerPoint mode. So if you could change it to presentation mode, it'd be easier for everyone to see. Please.
Sure. Yeah, I think, um, I have too many, uh, screens open, perhaps? That's, um, so I'm gonna stop sharing. And then reshare, uh, hopefully the right one.
It still isn't in the PowerPoint mode to share. Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Here we go.
Okay. All right. Hopefully that works.
Not to be a technological killer, but now we have little gray boxes over the screens.
We have a lot of unanswered questions in the study. Maybe that's why there's gray boxes here. boxes here.
Yeah, my apologies. Yeah, because I'm not always seeing what you all are seeing.
We can see that, I mean, again, I...
Let's just go ahead with this, Jennifer. Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not quite sure what the deal is, but you know, that's always the fun thing of all these different platforms, right? That makes it, makes it fun. All right. So just to give you kind of a brief refresh on the Riverview project and kind of what it is, the locally preferred alternative is a modern streetcar, and so I'll just kind of give you a brief overview. Starting in the right-hand corner, this would be connecting downtown St. Paul and the existing Green Line, all along West Seventh, connecting in through Fort Snelling to the existing Metro Blue Line connection, and then traveling to the airport and then on to Mall of America. So what we're looking at is kind of a hybrid type of transportation option that is like a light rail vehicle, but can operate in mixed traffic. So, you know, it's very customizable. It allows improved travel time and reliability. It has signal preemption or exclusive prioritization. It's a quieter, smoother ride than a bus typically, has level boarding similar to what we're used to with the existing light rail system that we have. Works to catalyze development along the corridors that it goes in and can be powered now either with overhead lines or off-wire technology. So while we see the existing LRT system having catenary lines above it, the technology is advanced such that, you know, we could have segments of this in which we wouldn't have to have those overhead catenary wires. So, so there's a customization piece to it. And then also, as I said, it allows for a lot of flexibility. It can be one vehicle, it can be a combination of vehicles, so it looks like a train. But the main characteristic of the modern streetcar that kind of differentiates it from what we currently have in our system is that it can dedic, it can operate in either a dedicated right-of-way or it can operate in mixed traffic. So we're in the left side, the starting left side of the arrow, the engineering and pre-environmental phase for this particular project. It's a three-year phase. What we're hoping to do during this three-year period is to refine the locally preferred alternative, which is a streetcar, figure out how it can get from downtown St. Paul along West Seventh, over the river, through Fort Snelling, and then interline at the existing Blue Line, and then come into the Mall of America. So we're trying to get to the details of really how it can work. We're about one year into this three-year phase. It's obviously a marathon, not a sprint, so we've got about two years left in this engineering and pre-environmental phase before we would, you know, move on to full-on project development and the full-on environmental process. That phase is expected to take about two years if we are successful and get the nod from FTA, Federal Transit Administration. We would expect to be in engineering after that for two years and then finally moving on to construction. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, kind of a ten-year period here of, of really developing and refining this project. So we're really kind of at the start of it, really digging into the technical details and figuring out, you know, how this can actually work from an engineering perspective. So, you know, the refinement of the locally preferred alternative, you know, I'm not going to go into detail in terms of what we're working on, on the St. Paul part, but we've spent a lot of time here in spring and summer particularly figuring out alternatives for the Bloomington South Loop area. You know, how will this work with the existing Blue Line? How will it connect in with the mall? Will it use the existing tracks? Are there other alternatives that might work better? So we're really, we've really made a lot of progress in terms of figuring out the technical solutions. And so we feel good about the work that we've done at this point. And so this graphic gives you a sense of, you know, where the line crosses the river, comes in and interlines with the existing Blue Line, hits the airport Terminal One and Terminal Two, and then comes in on existing Blue Line tracks and, you know, enters into the Mall of America station. So, you know, within that little image, we've done quite a bit of work to figure out, like, how would that work and what's optimal? We've met with a lot of stakeholders to try to get at alternatives that will make this work with the existing environment out there and the existing Blue Line in an optimal way. So the locally preferred alternative does show this coming in on existing Blue Line and coming into the existing Mall of America Transit Station. So that's something that we delved in early to figure out, okay, how, how will this work? And what does this mean in terms of automobile traffic out on Twenty-Fourth and Kilabrew? And so we really delved into that quickly with this issue resolution team that city staff has been participating in. So this image, I'm not going to go into the details of it, but the, the bold shows the, the level of traffic in terms of 2040. And so, you know, it, it's not a surprise, I'm not an engineer, but you know, level of service F, level of service E is never something that's good when you're looking at automobile traffic. And so this is already a heavily congested area as it is right now with automobile traffic and the existing Blue Line coming in. So, you know, that was something that we, we worked on early with staff. And with the, the next graphic, what this shows is that essentially with LRT and with Riverview Streetcar, the amount of gate downtime was really kind of untenable. So what this graphic shows you is that in terms of minutes that the gate would be down, it would roughly be a half hour of every hour that the gate would be down either for LRT or streetcar combined. And so that was, you know, something that really, we worked with staff to identify, like, well, we need to figure out a different way. And so we've spent a lot of time since then figuring out some, some alternatives that are different, and we're still kind of working through those with our Policy Advisory Committee, which we do expect to present those alternatives to in October. So, you know, we were really cognizant of traffic and we were, you know, cognizant of making something that is going to be workable for folks. And the amount of gate downtime using the existing Blue Line tracks was an early indicator that this was problematic. So as I said, you know, we've really been focusing on other alignment options to serve the Mall of America, trying to stay away from that Twenty-Fourth Avenue connection because of the, the traffic impacts that kind of reared their head early on. You know, we're looking at accommodating multiple folks here, Metro Transit, city, the county, Mall of America, and we've really focused on also what the traffic and transit operations would be for Thirty-Fourth and American Boulevard as well. So I'm going to pause there before I turn it over to Kevin to see if there are any questions that, that folks have. I'm not really able to see any kind of a chat bar or anything like that. So if there are questions that folks have...
Counsel, any questions?
For authority?
I think you've got the green light.
All right, well, that's good. So with that, I'm going to turn... With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. And Kevin, I, I can just drive for you and you just tell me next slide. And Kevin will go into detail in terms of how we've engaged the public and what our plans are in engaging the public in the future.
All right, thanks, Jennifer. Here we go. On this slide, we have kind of a list of our engagement activities from the last six months or so. A lot of our outreach has, has focused on, on sharing information about the project, about getting people aware that we're restarting this project and, and kind of reminding them of the work that we did in 2014 through 17 when we arrived at the locally preferred alternative. We've done quite a bit of work in tribal consultation, the area of where the Mississippi River and Minnesota River come together, the Bedote area sacred to the Dakota tribes and a number of other tribal governments and, and other tribes that are not formally recognized and federally recognized. So we've, we've taken tribal consultation on as a, as a really specific task, not only in engagement, but in our cultural resources work as well. We conducted a, a public information campaign on the Purpose and Need document. The Purpose and Need is essentially our foundational document as to why we're undertaking this study and what we hope to accomplish. We've reached out to business associations, neighborhood associations, or district councils in St. Paul, and a number of other stakeholder outreach events, too, and I'll describe those a little later. We had our first open house, it was during COVID restrictions, so it was a virtual open house. We had good turnout, but I'll describe that as well. We formed a community advisory committee, and we have a couple of members from the, the Bloomington-Minneapolis area. And, and finally, we've launched a media awareness campaign and a lot of different ads that you see off to the right side of the screen there. We branded Riverview a little bit, we're calling it "It's Your Streetcar," and we have other little kind of taglines underneath that say, "Tell us what you think," or "Share your street smarts." So we're just trying to get folks to, to kind of be attracted to this kind of colorful design and get them to read information about the project, get them to sign up for email updates, get them to join us at policy advisory committee meetings, and when we get more involved into public engagement in person, hopefully later this fall and into the, into the next year. On the next slide, getting into more details about tribal engagement. Early in the year, we had a meeting with tribal governments to talk about preliminary river crossing areas, river crossing ideas in the Bedote area. Later this summer, we had a couple more meetings with some specific ideas and plans after taking some, some of their feedback and sharing that with our engineering staff, and our engineering staff trying to come up with good ideas how to get across the river and connect to the Blue Line at the Fort Snelling Station. We're also reaching out to other organizations like the Native American Community Development Institute for, for a wider reach on, on, on tribal interests, where they have better connections to, to people who are not necessarily affiliated with the tribal government, but they're part of the Native American community. So we'd, we'd like to hear as, as much as we can from the tribal communities about this project and about what we propose to do here in the, in the river crossing area. The four Dakota tribes, tribes are also on the Bedote-Fort Snelling Area IRT, the issue resolution team that Jennifer described. So they're, we're not just engaging them kind of from the outside as, as an outside group, they're part of the, almost part of the project team in that respect. Then on the next slide, we can get into a little more information about purpose and need. We held a, a public information campaign about purpose and need. Before that, we shared it again with tribal governments for about a forty-five day review and comment period. We wanted to get their feedback first. Before we brought it to the public, we prepared a summary document and shared that online. We also had the full document available as well. The, the full document is chock full of statistics and data and, and things that are kind of dense and a little hard to read and comprehend and understand, so we, we prepared a summary document that, that was more, I guess, more digestible to the public that they could, could read through and, and comment on. Comment period was open for about five weeks from middle of May to the end of June. During our first virtual open house in June 23rd, we shared information about the Purpose and Need document at the open house, collected more comments during that meeting and, and coaxed people to, to share information with their friends and neighbors and, and send us a few more comments before the period closed on the 25th. On the next slide, we can talk a little bit more about engagement activities we conducted during the year. We've engaged the district councils, the Capital River Council, West Seventh Fort Road Federation. We engaged the Highland District Council way back in January, just at the beginning of this timeframe. So we've, and we've reached out to them, we've engaged the Fort Snelling Area Joint Powers Group, so we've, we've tried to connect with as many people as possible. National Night Out was our first in-person event. We held that at Union Depot in downtown. It was our first in-person event. We've had a lot of virtual events and a lot of virtual presentations, much like this one up until then, but that was an opportunity to, to meet with people and, and talk to them about what's being planned, and, and we did that with an eye on public safety and trying to be socially distanced and other things as well. We are planning more neighborhood and district council and business association events in the future, hopefully in person, and likely coming after our policy advisory committee meeting that is scheduled for October 21st. All this engineering information, project development work will be vetted through our technical committees and then through our policy advisory committee for refinement and discussion, and then we can bring it out to the public for their review. On the next slide, we've got some information specific about our virtual open house we held on June 23rd. Hundred and twenty people registered, more than half actually attended. I think it turned out to be a really nice day and a lot of people changed their minds about attending, but we had really good turnout nonetheless. I think seventy is kind of the high end of what we would expect for an in-person event anyway. Again, we had presentations on the Purpose and Need and some other project updates. We had a live poll of attendees and follow-up surveys, so it wasn't just project staff talking for thirty, forty minutes about the project and then asking them for questions. We interrupted our own presentation, asked them for questions, and there's an example of one of the polling questions there off to the side, just asking people who came to the virtual open house, what's the best way to connect with you in the project area? How can we keep them informed? How can we collect their feedback and how do they feel heard as we're working through this project? So they gave us some good feedback that we can use already. Around thirty questions were answered live, so we had a good, good question and answer session at the end. And being virtual online, we were able to record it, and we've provided that recording and the slide deck on our website for people to, to view later if they were unable to make the meeting and they can, so they can, they can view it on their own and, and send us in questions and comments. Then on the next slide, about our community advisory committee, we formed our community advisory committee earlier this year. We solicited participation all up and down the corridor. I want to thank Shane and other, and Julie and other staff there at Bloomington for helping us recruit members in the Bloomington-Minneapolis area, people who work at the Mall of America, work at the, at the airport, so we could get some representation on that side of the river as well as, as the work we're doing in St. Paul. We want to acquire, or, or acquire isn't the right word, but we want to achieve diverse representation of community stakeholders. So we're looking for a range of ages, we're looking for people who own their own home, people who rent, we're looking for people who own businesses in the corridor, we're looking for people who, who commute to work in the corridor, we're looking for people who've lived there a long time and people who've just moved there. We were looking for people who've, who are financially well-established and others who are, were just kind of starting out. So we wanted a broad spectrum of people, we wanted racial and ethnic diversity as well, broad spectrum of people, so we weren't hearing just from one, one or two vocal groups, we wanted to get the perspective of everyone. And I, I think we've done that, we have a good group of, of people on our community advisory committee. We held our first meeting in May, our goal was to meet quarterly. We were working on the Bedote area and connection to the Mall of America, kind of slowed us down a little bit. We're having our next meeting planned, not for late September, but for, for early October. So that's when we'll have our next CAC meeting, and the community advisory committee will, will, will advise, I guess, they'll provide their community perspective on the project, on trade-offs with different kind of design alternatives, the pros and cons of those different, different alternatives we've looked at, and, and kind of moving forward, we'll, we'll get more of a community perspective from this group of people, and they'll share that information directly to the policy advisory committee at their next meeting, October 21st, when the PAC meets. So this group will meet and their co-chairs will share that information directly. It won't be filtered through staff, it won't be summarized by staff, it'll be a, a direct connection with the community, above and beyond what we normally do with pop-up meetings and, and social media and other things like that. And then on the next page, we have just a list of upcoming engagement activities. We'll continue our stakeholder engagement, I mentioned, we'll get back in touch with the district councils and other groups as well. We'll activate our artist engagement, we have some artists, part of our community engagement team who are, are very good at drawing people out to events. When you, when you, when you set up a table, and as I've done, you set up a table at a business and you've got, you know, a guy like me standing there handing out information about a project, people don't necessarily want to talk to you, but when you've got an artist out there doing something fun, something interesting, it attracts more people and we can... and we can engage more folks that way with artist engagement approach. We'll increase in project visibility in the corridor. If you travel up and down West Seventh Street on October 4th, you'll see a billboard on West Seventh Street. It'll be a visual reminder to people that we are working on this project. And please contact us if you have questions and comments. As you're driving around and you get stuck in traffic and you wish you were on a nice, fast-moving streetcar, you can call us and tell us that. We plan on having a second open house around the alternatives that are being refined at the Mall of America Bloomington area and Bedote-Fort Snelling. So we're getting close to finishing that work and sharing that through, as I mentioned, our technical committee and our policy committee, kind of moving that up the ladder, vetting. The work that's been done at the issue resolution teams and our engineering group, and ready to share that with the public. And I know during the first phase of work, personally, I did some engagement at the mall in the transit center, where people come and go, was able to coax a few people into talking to me about Riverview at that point. Did the same at the, I think it was at the People Mover at the airport. So those are two locations we'll definitely visit again to share information about this project. And if there are other ideas, I can connect with Shane. He's on our project management team, I believe, and other groups, other committees that we can connect with Shane and Julie and other good ideas about how to engage folks in the Bloomington and South Loop area. And I think that is our last slide, yep. Any questions about the public engagement work that we're doing for River Record, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions?
Board Authority, any questions?
Kevin, I know, and I may have missed a meeting, but I know that there was engagement going on, or at least a discussion back and forth with the folks within the river, the National Scenic River Flyway, something along those lines. Basically, the folks were protecting the scenery in the river valley. And I'm assuming that is continuing. I didn't see it on your list, and I just wanted to question and follow up and see if that was still going on.
Oh, yes, I can address that, and maybe Jennifer knows those folks better. But as part of our issue resolution teams, we've involved the National Park Service. We've involved the Minneapolis Park Board, Historic Fort Snelling. Then there are a number of other groups too, and Jennifer maybe knows more of them better than I do. But we're including them, and they're part of our issue resolution team. So we're working directly with them and keeping them informed, and they're sharing information that they'd like us to develop as part of project alternatives.
Yeah, that's well said, Kevin. Yeah, the issue resolution team for Bedote-Fort Snelling is our largest. It has almost 40 different individuals that attend that. So it's a very large group, very diverse group, that includes, you know, our stakeholders from our state agencies, our tribal partners, as well as other city partners. So it's been a good experience in terms of, we've put in a lot of extra work this summer, but we think that we've been able to gather input from the stakeholders and come up with technical solutions that we think make this a viable project through that area. And I do want to say that once we kind of unveil the technical solutions that we've arrived at for the Mall of America and Airport Issue Resolution Team, that we do plan on coming back to the city council and or port authority to show those to you in more detail. So we're expecting, you know, to do that after the PAC meeting in October, so probably, you know, mid to late fall. We'll be back before you, just to show you the work that we've done and get input.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Any other questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Board Authority, any questions? I think we're good.
All right, well, thank you all. Thanks for your continuing work on this and for the update. Very appreciated. So thanks much.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Move on in the agenda. Item 2.3, which is an update on Expo and World's Fair. And Shane, I'm going to let you kick this off for us while I go around and plug in my computer. I'm running out of battery here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll share a PowerPoint here in just a moment. Okay, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. President and Port Authority members. So tonight, just want to give a quick update, again, following up on an update we did about a month ago to the city council on the status of Expo 27. And with us tonight, we've got David Lehrer from the Minnesota Expo Bid Committee. He'll say a few words. But really, the goal is tonight for the city-port presentation is just to give a little primer on what Expos are and talk a little bit about what a post-expo site could be used for. And that's really the goal of the city and port authority, if the city and port are to get involved in the expo here again, like we did back in 2017 for Expo 2023. And so, again, Minnesota is looking at hosting an expo in 2027, and the theme of the project is healthy people, healthy planet, wellness and well-being for all. Expos come in two main variants. They come in the big version that happens in the years divisible by five, and they come in smaller versions in the years between those zero and five years. And small is still quite large. It just means that it can't be any bigger than 62 acres and can't be any longer in time than three months. And so the BIE, the Bureau of International Exhibitions, is the organization that regulates Expos. And there are technically four different types of Expos, but the two biggest ones are the ones that I talked about just a moment ago. Simply put, an expo is a state fair and a trade show combined, and about half the activity for the project occurs off-site. The Milan Expo was 271 acres, had 70 buildings. Most of them were temporary. It was a large street that was covered by an awning, again, with pavilions built on both sides. The US Pavilion was very well-attended. It had a lot of public art. And it had a daily parade featuring each country, and typically, the president of each prime minister, leader, whatever, of each of the countries would come to the event, or another high-ranking official. In 2027, Kazakhstan held an expo focused on energy, and they're located in the middle of Asia there, 62-acre site. And the leave behind there, the post-expo use, which is, again, you know, the expo event is important to the state of Minnesota. But if Bloomington is to become involved in the project in the way we did back in 2017, the thing that we're... Thing that we're supremely focused on is, what's left behind the expo? You know, does it leave something that benefits Bloomington long-term? And in the case of Kazakhstan and a lot of the other world's fairs that'll go through, there is an important leave behind. In Kazakhstan, there's basically a science museum that's in the middle, and then all of the other permanent development that surrounds the big globe in the middle. It's an eight-story globe that they built. And coincidentally, they do have a mall that's connected to the site. But those buildings that ring around the circular globe are intended to be basically office. And how they constructed these is interesting, and it's to be learned from. Again, the success of the specific expo site in Kazakhstan, you know, in the middle of Asia is a lot different than it could be in Bloomington and Minnesota and the United States. But a lot can be learned from, you know, the way that they put the buildings together and built the architecture. This is a picture of one of the backsides of one of those buildings. And you can see on the left side, there's four stories, and on the right side, there's three stories. So they kind of built them flexibly. And they held the pavilions, the public space during the expo, in the first either two or three floors there, so that they had high bay space for the exhibits for the countries. And then post-expo, they go in and put the floor in and make it available for the post-expo use, which is something I think that we would want to look very closely at. In Dubai, the expo is supposed to be held in 2020. It was postponed due to COVID, so it's going to open on October 1, 2021. And this is a big expo, massive project, you know, multi-billion-dollar project for sure. But post-expo, this is what they're looking to do, to build a model global community for the future. Obviously, the climate there is a lot different than it is in Minnesota. But, you know, again, this is permanent development. It's a big expo, different than Milan, which is mostly temporary buildings. They're looking at taking the site and, you know, doing something with it long-term. And it'll be really interesting to see how that is used after their six-month expo in 2021 here. The benefits to Bloomington, permanent development, again. You know, as we said back in 2017, if we're talking about paving a parking lot and putting up tents, I don't think Bloomington is interested. Obviously, the council and port get to make that decision, but that's the MO that we're operating under, consistent with 2017. So what could be left behind is permanent branding and authenticity for Bloomington and for South Loop. Certainly, the fair itself would generate substantial general fund revenues from lodging admissions, food and beverage tax, et cetera. And there could be financial support for legacy developments, i.e., money from the state or the federal government to subsidize the permanent development of the project and infrastructure. And so those things are more quantifiable as we dig into the project. And really, the timeline for the project, Q4, 2021, you know, we'll be coming back to you as we continue to study Bloomington's level of engagement on the project. Tonight is not a decision point for the council, but we will be coming back to the council and port for a decision point on exactly how you want to proceed with Expo. And then in Q1, 2022, regardless of Bloomington's involvement, the BIE will come into Minnesota and do what amounts to fundamentally an audit of the Minnesota Bid Committee's application to host the expo. And then in November of 2022, the BIE would vote to select the country that the expo during that time period will happen. And so those are the two big waypoints, Q1, 2022, and November of '22. And with that, David Lehrer is here with us tonight, and he's just going to give a quick update from the Expo 2027 meeting. Welcome, David.
Good evening, David. Welcome back.
Yeah, it's good to be back.
Good to see you.
Mayor, council members, commissioners, just as a quick update, I really want to thank Shane for his presentation on a lot of the physical attributes. But where we stand today and from my last presentation here, we have engaged with a management team to proceed with things like fundraising and communications and kind of laying the groundwork for the organizational structure for the expo. And we have yet to do any kind of detailed study of site or buildings or form at this point. So we're kind of laying all the groundwork on, getting that all in place. Shane laid out the details of the timing, and our application will be due sometime around March of 2022. So before that, we'll be coming back to this body and asking for having recommendations, having some options, and then asking for approval to proceed. And at this point, really, our study has been focused on Bloomington, and we haven't engaged in other communities in Minnesota. It was asked last time about, is Bloomington identified in any of the application materials to date? And the answer is no. It's just a Minnesota bid at this time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, questions?
Well, it's more of a comment. I mean, I think something like this could really be exciting and bring a lot of things. And I look at the possibility for some, we would have to have some major sponsor, but I can think of a lot of things where this could make a lot of sense for somebody to get behind and really get going. So hopefully, those discussions can move forward. But I'm glad we're pursuing it, and I know it's been a lot of work, but I think it could be great.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, you know, it's worth continuing to look at this and consider it. I think, given that we start to see a timeline associated with this, putting together what our timeline would be in terms of making a decision about participating and starting to develop what we think the criteria we're going to use to make that decision, so that we can both kind of collectively make that decision on a rational basis, as opposed to being rushed on the end and communicate with the members of the committee about what our level of commitment is or is not and kind of where we're at on that. I think would be a worthwhile thing, because I don't want to necessarily get us to the point where we're the ones they've been working with, but we don't really have a consensus here that we're going to go forward. I think it's better to kind of lay out what our decision-making process is for making that decision and getting all that information out so that we can make that decision in a good, transparent way. So I think continuing to have the conversation is a good thing. I've always said that we need to look for projects like this that we're uniquely situated to do, and this clearly falls into that category of thing that we can be involved in. But we also, I think, have to look at it and say, is this the right deal for us? And if it is the right deal, if it's great. If it's not, I think we want to be very clear and say, okay, we've decided that we're not going to participate. And so thinking through that schedule and that decision-making process seems like an important thing for us to do. And I'd look forward to the staff bringing forward a pulse about how we ought to do that.
Additional questions, comments? I hear no one coming forward. Nothing else?
I think we've said our piece.
I think we have. David, thanks much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
For being here, and I'm sure we'll see you again soon and probably frequently as we continue down this path and continue considering if this is the path we want to go on. So thank you. Thanks for being here. Item 2.4 on our agenda are the next steps for consideration for a South Loop water park. Shane, once again, lead us off on this one. Shane, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. President, council and port authority members. Just one second while I share presentation here. All right, okay. So it's been a little time since we've talked about the water park. I'll go through a little bit of water park history, talk about what the council and port have done in the past related to the water park, talk about COVID, talk about some TIF flexibility that the legislature gave to cities and port authorities in Minnesota in 2021. And then we'll talk a little bit about options for potentially moving forward or not. Bonnie Carlson's here from the CVB, who has a short presentation on this subject and some other related subjects. And then we'll consider direction to staff at the end of all of that. I will try to move through this quickly, because I know you have another meeting after this, and we're already going to push up against that. So I'll go as quickly as people will allow me to. But of course, we want to be thoughtful about all this, so slow me down if I'm going too fast. So really, again, the South Loop District Plan Goals, what this one focuses on is accelerating the development in the district. The water park would be situated north of the Mall of America, next to IKEA on the lot. That is, you know, currently the old Met Center site. The water park would be Phase, we call it Phase 2B of the mall project, with Radisson Blue on the south side. We call this Phase 1C on the north side, which is the JW Marriott Hotel, the office building, and the additional retail. And then IKEA is technically a contract phase of Mall of America, although it's not currently connected to the project itself. A hotel and additional parking would likely get built along with the water park. And then later phases of the project would get filled in, and what those look like, especially now post-COVID or mid or post-COVID, wherever we are. You know, that development is certainly blurry at this time and changes a lot until those pieces actually get financed and happen. Again, you've seen these before, a year and a half ago roughly, of what the water park would look like, looking from the Mall of America out across the water park, and then a similar view from the other side of the water park, looking south, across the wave pool. The water park would be the largest indoor pool hall. There's a lot of different ways you can measure these water parks, but it would be the largest indoor pool hall in North America. And it would also have the longest indoor beach. That's the dotted line in there, and that's kind of what's important for people visiting the water park to put lawn chairs on and things like that. Counting it up, we've had this project before the council and port authority 10 times. But item 10 there is kind of the only, I don't want to call it "normal" council meeting. That's where the zoning approvals and whatnot went through on December 16 of 2019, a couple of months before COVID hit. But you can see that the council and port authority have supported the project all the way through, working on the nonprofit model and investing in design and development through 2021. working on the nonprofit model and investing in design and development through two thousand and nineteen. And we were in the final stages of tidying up negotiations in the spring of two thousand and twenty when, when COVID hit. So March eleven, the pandemic hits, um, the mall closed on March seventeen, reopened on June ten. It took, you know, almost a year before, you know, most of the restrictions on entertainment venues and things like that to end, um, inside Mall of America, so that, um, traffic and sales could, you know, return in earnest. And in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, um, especially before the Delta variant, um, you know, became more prevalent, traffic and sales are really returning, and they still are. I mean, back-to-school traffic, um, is a, is a real high point for them, um, for both the mall and for the lodging industry in Bloomington. And, and we're somewhere, you know, combining traffic and sales together, just kind of aggregating it. We're somewhere around eighty to eighty-five percent back, um, to pre-pandemic levels on both of those fronts. We don't see the actual sales tax numbers for a year and a half from the Minnesota Department of Revenue. So we won't know the actual taxable sales. That won't, data won't become public to us until, you know, a year and a half after the year closes, which is, um, a little bit of a bummer, but just is what it is. On the hotel side, um, leisure travel has certainly returned, and business travel hasn't. The way we, we see that is just what days of the week, um, hotels are getting booked, pre-pandemic. You could barely get a hotel on a Wednesday night, especially during the summer in Bloomington, literally. There was almost no occupancy, and that's the combination of leisure and business in the summer. And then, um, you know, what we're seeing now is very busy, you know, weekend travel, and those Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays aren't as busy as they were, um, uh, during the time before the pandemic. And so, um, you know, what the new normal looks like, I mean, it's just simply unpredictable. Nobody knows today what, um, business travel is gonna look like in six months, a year, two years. You know, I'm part of a team internal at the city that tries to predict that. But, um, as we talk about every time we meet, it's just, you know, it's really interesting to look at the data every time we get the actual numbers, but, you know, it's really hard to predict. But where we're at currently is about sixty-five to seventy percent of pre-pandemic, um, revenue on a weekly or monthly basis. Two thousand and twenty's obviously the pandemic, where we saw that sharp decline, um, and then the, kind of the slow digout, led, um, in large part by leisure travel, with business travel starting to layer back in, um, a little bit. But not the way that it was before. I mean, you started to see the Wednesday occupancies starting to inch up, starting in, in March, April, May, and then, um, come back up through, you know, the summer this year. But, um, what Delta's gonna do to that is, is still, remains to be seen. So, um, things are getting better, but we're not back yet. So as, as we worked through the legislative sessions in two thousand, oops, yeah, no, that's right, two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, the legislature did give cities and port authorities a new tool. It's actually an old tool that they recycled from two thousand and eleven. It's a very flexible tool that allows cities and port authorities to use TIF as, um, uh, very flexibly. It's, the legislation is written in a way that, uh, it's too strong to say the cities and port authorities can do whatever they want, but it's, it's a very flexible tool. And so it could be used to assist, um, the water park development in any, uh, or should I say, in many of the financing models that we've looked at. And the purpose of that tool is to spur development, especially for industries that have been hit by COVID. This obviously falls into that category. It has some stipulations that the TIF, um, from this tool would have to be committed by the end of two thousand twenty-two and spent by two thousand and twenty-five. I use the words committed. That's not the statutory language. It's more technical than that. It has to do with the TIF plan and things like that, but that's the, that's the gist of it. So there's a number of different ways that the port and council could decide to move forward with the water park, um, now or not. And, uh, there's a lot of different permutations within these options, but baking it down into kind of three main options that we can talk about tonight. Again, there's a lot of, um, flexibility within these options, if, if people have strong opinions about that. So we're not here to say it's option one, two, or three. From staff, we're saying, you know, there's a lot of, um, wiggle room within these, but it can be baked into, or boiled down into three main categories. And the first option is, I'm sticking with the nonprofit model that we've, you know, talked about at, at nine of those ten meetings, or actually only eight. But fundamentally, I, I think these, the, the people at this board generally know. I did include the outline of the nonprofit model so that people could review it if they wanted to. I don't know. I'm happy to go into any detail about that if we, um, if we have questions tonight. So that nonprofit model is one option. You could modify that model. Any modifications would have to be talked about with all the, all the parties, um, the nonprofit itself, um, triple five, the underwriters, et cetera, you know, any, any tweaks to the term sheet, of course, would have to be, you know, discussed with them and negotiated. But that's not to say that that's off the table. If we went forward with the nonprofit, any version of it, we would have to update the ground lease appraisal and the feasibility study, both things that we funded previously. And those studies basically have to be redone, cost about a hundred thousand dollars. And then after those are, are completed, we move into final negotiations on the financial aspects, which is kind of where we were at the end of two thousand and twenty, when, you know, the pandemic hit a few months later. And so we'd have to redo those two studies, do the final negotiations, and then hopefully, um, you know, move into the process of drafting all the agreements. That'd take about six to nine months. The TIF flexibility may, may or may not need to be added into the project due to COVID impacts to the feasibility study. We don't know that answer today because we haven't asked that feasibility study consultant to do the work. You know, I've talked to him a few times just to, to get a feel for where he thinks things are at. And of course, he hasn't done the work, but, you know, he, he generally says, you know, water park industries will return. And, um, you know, they are seeing some upticks from pent-up demand at some water parks or across the country, which is interesting, because we're still in the midst of the pandemic. But how that would bake into a thirty slash fifty-year projection on revenue for a big project like this, you know, that's why you pay him to do the study. And so we don't know those answers today. So again, six to nine months from today, you could see a project closing. The nonprofit and the underwriter, Providence and Berkeley's are still engaged, talk to them regularly, and they are willing to move forward with the model. Of course, we still have to do the work, but, um, they're willing to do it. One of the things that, you know, comes up a lot in my mind, especially during the pandemic, and especially when it hit, when we were relatively close to closing the deal, is, you know, how would the nonprofit model and, and the whole project have held up if the pandemic would have hit after we closed? Or even, you know, a year or two after the project would have opened? You know, you know, how bad would it have been? And so I've asked, uh, you know, the team members that, you know, the bankers, the underwriters, Berkeley's and whatnot. I was extremely curious, right? And, um, this, this quick facts that's on our website that we presented to these bodies a number of times still holds true. And really, you know, the council and port authority would have no obligation to assist the project if the pandemic would have hit while we were under construction or after, after it would have opened. There may have been an ask. I mean, we can't say that the nonprofit or the bond represent, the bondholder representative wouldn't have came in to a meeting like this and said, gee, we'd like some help. That doesn't mean that the council and port authority, um, would be advised to do so. In fact, we specifically, and the legal team, um, had specifically advised in probably a couple of those, um, eight meetings where we were talking about the nonprofit model, that it would be unadvisable to do just that. I know John Utley, we had many conversations about that as we were designing this, this model, that as long as the council and port authority drew a line and did not assist the project, should there be financial trouble, you're good. The reason that bondholders get returns on, on buying those bonds is because they're fully informed of the risk, and they go into the project with the assumption that the council and port aren't going to provide additional funding. And what is dedicated to the project would, were the special use taxes at the mall. Of course, we all know the mall closed, and that revenue wouldn't have existed for a while, and there would have been some nervous bondholders. So be it. That's, that's, that's the risk you take when you, when you buy bonds. But the point I'm trying to make to the, to the boards tonight is, the model would have been fine, even in the pandemic, as long as the board stayed with what they originally were advised to do by the legal team. And that is the nonprofit model. The section, the second option now is, we think, available to us, and it's a private financing model. So this is totally different than the nonprofit model. It's very similar to how other projects at the mall and other projects in South Loop and across the city, and frankly, the state have been financed. So it's, it's straight-up private financing with TIF. And so, um, the agreement structure is, is way more typical. There's not a nonprofit involved. There's no special use taxes backstopping the debt. It's just the revenue from the project, the traditional, um, lender, traditional equity. The only kicker is, is that the, um, because the, the project debt is more expensive, meaning, you know, the borrowing rate for a private developer is a lot higher than if we went with the nonprofit model. There's, the cost of money is more. Therefore, there needs to be a gap filled, and that's estimated to be early in the process here to be about thirty million dollars. The two thousand twenty-one legislation allows the port authority to do that if they wanted to. And so, you know, how that thirty million would go into the project is still, you know, TBD, still to be negotiated. It's early yet. And that's why we're here tonight, asking the boards, you know, is this option interesting enough so that triple five and the financing team and the city and the port authority staff can go out and, you know, have more conversations about this? Because, because if it is interesting, there's a couple of months of work to, to find out if the financing market, markets, are willing to do a project like this. Their private feasibility studies would need to be completed, and, you know, the rough terms of, of, of this would get laid out. But it is, one of the benefits of this model, option two, if you will, is that it's just a lot more simple, right? And it doesn't have the, um, the, the, the arrangement with the nonprofit and the city ownership of the project after the debt is, um, is, is paid off in thirty years in the nonprofit model, even though in the nonprofit model, at that thirty-year mark, the city gets to keep all of the revenue from the water park, which is, which is a benefit. I know that, um, some people think, okay, you're getting a thirty-year-old water park at that point. But, I mean, we visited the thirty-year-old water park up in West Edmonton, Canada, and the outside, you know, not the prettiest architectural structure in the world, but the inside's quite nice. I mean, it's, it's kept up well, and as long as, um, capital improvements on the interior of this water park were funded correctly, which was baked in and arguably overfunded in our pro forma, you'd end up with a nice water park at thirty years. And so there is that benefit that you would be foregoing with, uh, the private financing model. And so, again, um, how that TIF would sit in the equity stack is still TBD. It could go in there kind of as a normal, um, infrastructure investment, regulated by a recapture agreement, or it could be, it could go in it in any, a number of different ways.
So Shane, if, if this option two was, was, was the preferred way, does that require any financing upfront, like a hundred thousand dollars that you'd have to do in the nonprofit model?
Mr. President and port authority members, uh, no. The, the, the feasibility studies and all of that would be private. We have our feasibility studies. Whether or not we would wanna do our own feasibility study to, to, to check that would be up to us. But it doesn't require anything, because we're not underwriting, um, any of the debt. We're not borrowing. We have roughly this amount of money in the bank today and/or we would during a roughly two-year, uh, two-and-a-half-year development and construction period, because we, we get TIF in, um, over those two-and-a-half years. And today, we've got about eighty-five million in cash in the port TIF account, and we get roughly nine-ish million a year. And so to fund a hundred-million-dollar investment, roughly seventy in infrastructure and thirty in, call it, TIF equity, you still don't have to borrow for the project.
And, and we are, are dealing in this particular case, too, with fenced money, because this money has to be used in South Loop for projects, correct?
Mr. President, commissioners, yes, it's actually, um, more fenced than that due to the, the two thousand and sixteen redevelopment contract that we have with, with T five. And so not only does it have to be used in South Loop, but, um, it's money that's generated from the project, you know, via two thousand and, well, a large part of it is via two thousand and thirteen legislation, which is, um, you know, acutely focused on development on the Met Center and Met Stadium sites. So it's, it's money that's dedicated for this purpose. And so, um, so again, the last bullet there, I mean, um, if the council and port authority tonight decide to move forward with option two, it's not a, it's not a green light. This is a done deal. It's really a, it's really an indication for us to work with T five to see if the private financing model with additional TIF equity is, um, an option for moving forward. And that's, that's a, that's a big question mark. We don't know the answer to that tonight. And so, again, um, if the council, council port wanna do that, it's, it's not a, it's not a done deal by any means, but, you know.
Shane, can you just double back one more, one slide? Just, just a little bit on your final bullet point there. I mean, if you could explain that a little bit more, I mean, is, the, so action from the court, the council and the port would be needed to truly test lending market for this option. Can you, can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So right now, um, Mr. Mayor and its council members, the, the council and port authority has, you know, moved forward again with, you know, ten meetings and ultimately leading up to this nonprofit model. And it's been on pause during the pandemic for obvious reasons. And so what we don't know, um, as staff or, and, and triple five doesn't know today is, does the council still now wanna do the water park project? And if they do, um, do they wanna do the, the nonprofit model and get those benefits and take those risks? Or do they wanna look at, um, doing something different now, which is available to us based on the two thousand and twenty-one legislation? So it's a fair amount of time, money, and effort to go out to the financing markets and, and test the waters. And, um, you know, triple five fairly wants to know if, if it's worth it.
So it, it's as much as, um, the, you know, the, the commitment from the council and the port, whether or not we wanna move forward with this. But then it would also be getting into the market, the lending market, to see if there's any stomach in the lending market to do this type of thing as well.
Mr. Mayor and council members, yeah, that's exactly right. And so again, uh, benefits to the city and port authority, but mostly to the city for either of these models, is, you know, this project certainly would be a regional amenity to the, to the city and the Minneapolis-St. Paul region. And, um, uh, Bonnie Carlson from the CBB will talk a little bit about that here in a few minutes. It does help add resiliency to South Loop and the, and the mall by bringing a new amenity to the district. As we all know and have become more acutely aware during the pandemic, the mall's about ten percent of the city's tax base, and hotels are about another six-and-a-half percent of the city's tax base. And, um, while the pandemic really shone a light on, you know, how important those industries are to the, to the city's finances and general fund, I mean, again, you know, those existing lodging taxes that come to the city's general fund and admission taxes are substantial. And keeping that industry healthy is, is just simply in the best interest of the city's general fund and, uh, property taxpayers in Bloomington. And so, you know, the two thousand and twenty-one general fund levy of fifty-seven point two million dollars would be nine million higher, keeping city services constant without those existing lodging and admission taxes. To the extent that a water park gets built very conservatively, it's, it's another million in, um, admissions and lodging taxes. In fact, it could be double that based on some estimates that I've seen. But, um, certainly very conservative, very conservatively, it's easily a million. And the council, um, could, if they wanted to, designate those funds for specific purposes anywhere in the city. You could dedicate that extra million or two to, um, economic development across the city for commercial nodes. You could dedicate it to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, or any other use, frankly. City general fund money is extremely flexible, and that comes to you as general fund money. And so, um, there, there, there's a way that you could specifically tie the benefits of the water park to benefits citywide, in addition to all the other spin-off benefits that come from the project. And to the extent that the private, um, model is what the council and port decide, you know, you spend TIF that's, as President Erickson calls it, fenced in, um, for the larger benefit of the, of the city. And so that's something to consider. Now, on the nonprofit model, that second to last bullet there, um, again, you do have that profit upside for the water park from years thirty-one through fifty. Um, you don't get that with, uh, option two. You only get that with the nonprofit model, and those, that, those monies are substantial. They shouldn't be discounted. That's, you know, twenty to thirty million dollars in today's money. It'd be a lot more in twenty thirty, but just keeping dollars constant for a minute, I mean, twenty to thirty million dollars annually is nothing to sneeze at. And that is also flexible money for the, for the city. And that is also flexible money for the, for the city to do with what it wants. And then again, um, in either of the deals, um, a discount to city residents, uh, could be baked into the deal. Again, risks, um, low performance of the water park, certainly a risk. Again, depending on how it's financed, will, um, you know, determine the level of risk if it's the nonprofit model. Again, I talked about what would happen to that fifth bullet on the quick facts. And then, um, you know, in the nonprofit model, again, the sales and use taxes at the mall would get implemented in the nonprofit model if the water park doesn't perform as it's, um, as it's forecasted to. There's always the reputational risk, um, being involved in any big project like this carries reputational risk. In the, in the bond rating, um, for the nonprofit model, Fitch, um, if you remember, we did have a number of conversations with Fitch about how, um, the nonprofit model could affect the city's larger, um, credit rating. It's very complicated. It has to do with, um, math and how many people, uh, in Bloomington would pay those sales and use taxes and assumptions on that. And frankly, it has a lot to do with, you know, how the, how the, how the, the Fitch rating model is set up. And it's frankly different than, um, the other two larger rating agencies. Certainly, uh, you know, ownership changes at the mall are always a risk on any projects. Mall performance decline, um, we've been through that now. But they're coming back and, I mean, obviously that's, that's good for the city and good for them. You know, there could be a, a recovery in the private debt model of the thirty million dollars in TIF equity through recapture if it's structured such that, um, we do it that way and the project does, um, well, that money could come back. It would have to come back as TIF, once TIF, always TIF. And there's always risks of not doing the project as well. Um, you know, you, you have these tools and you have this funding for the purpose of development. Um, if we don't do a water park, what types of projects will we do? How do we continue to grow? The third option is to keep the project on hold, um, or decide not to do it. That's always an option. Certainly, you know, the uncertainty related to COVID, both, um, from an infection, infection level, uh, you know, and the economy, I mean, nobody knows what the future of, of COVID is. I'm starting to read about the Mew variant. I'm sure people are reading that too, but we'll keep an eye on that. Triple Five uncertainty, you know, the changes in retail and travel, you know, we did talk about that. Obviously, two thousand and twenty was a rough year for being a mall owner. They, you know, had, uh, you know, issues with their mortgage and property taxes. Those are all, um, in good stead as we sit here today. And what will the new normal be and when will it happen? Or has it already happened? Is this, is this what new, new normal looks like? You know, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure how to answer that question. I don't know that anybody really can. But again, you know, myriad options and permutations of the, of the stated options could be considered by the boards. But again, we tried to break them down into three, um, general categories so that the boards can, um, ask questions related to those and then hopefully, um, give us some direction tonight. And just before I, I, I hand it over to Bonnie for a second, I mean, again, as you think about this, um, we're just asking the council to, uh, and the Port Authority to point us in one of these general directions. But before we do that, um, I'd stand for questions and then I'll hand it over to Bonnie for a little bit.
Shane, I, I just, one of the things that we have here is we're obviously not making any kind of decision to go forward. I mean, what we're saying is we'd, we'd like to explore options and, and that's what we're doing at this point. And I, I, I start thinking that we've got three options laid out, but you really could say, one of the things that you could do for a relatively small cost is continue to evaluate the nonprofit model because you don't know what's going to happen with the, with the, the for-profit model. And a hundred thousand dollars relative to what we have put in, it is not a, a big sum based upon five or six million dollars that we've already got invested. And, you know, one of the benefits we have is, is we are dealing with a situation where there's been substantial comeback, uh, you know, I, in looking at a lot of things, we know business travel is still down, but that, from a sense of, of, of our economy in Bloomington, to the extent that, that you can get the leisure travel and accelerate that more than that's, that's, that's something that obviously takes and fills hotel rooms and do those things. So I, 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 I think you can look at this as, as really something saying, is it worthwhile exploring at this point in time to continue to investigate what can be done? And then there's, information's going to have to come back at a later date and we're, and we're going to have to see, but we are in a fortunate situation where the more time passes, the more we, we, ability we really have to, to see what the real facts in the ground are going to be and, and what's been going on. So, so I'll shut up at that point in time, but, uh, you know, I didn't want to preempt other questions, but, so.
Questions from anyone? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Shane, I guess just to, to clarify here, if we direct staff to pursue one option or another, does that, does that preclude us changing our minds at some point? Like if we say hyper, if we say, you know, we'd prefer to go forward with the, the more sort of traditional private financing model? I mean, are we, are we sort of, not that that's approving the project, obviously, but are we stuck down that road? Or could we at some point, assuming all the parties continue to be interested, could we at some point go back and say, actually, we'd prefer to go the nonprofit route?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, um, it's, it's true certainly that you're not approving the project and, you know, you're going to have, you know, a couple more bites at the apple, um, no matter what option you go, assuming that you go with option one or two. If you go with option three, obviously that's different. But, um, if you go with option one or two, it doesn't preclude, um, changing your mind at some point. You know, one thing that we always consider is, you know, the time and effort spent by all the project partners, right? And it goes without saying that, you know, Providence and Barclays and the team that we worked with on the nonprofit side for option one, have spent a lot of, you know, time and money, um, you know, getting to the point that we're, where we are at today. And, uh, they're very, very interested in, you know, seeing the project through under option one. You know, the city and Port Authority have spent a lot of time and money and effort on this over the past, uh, many years as, as well, as has Triple Five. Just say you go forward with, with option two and you send, you know, T five and staff, um, working on that and honing that model. I mean, it's certainly possible that, you know, two months goes by and the private markets aren't interested. Maybe they are, maybe they're, maybe they're not. That's, that's the work that still needs to be done. Or maybe there are other issues with, um, the term sheet or things like that that we can't solve or that, you know, we bring them to these bodies and, and, um, you all decide that, that you, um, aren't okay with the terms. I mean, you guys are the decision makers, we give you options, right? So, um, it's just more of a calculation on, on spending, you know, the right amount of time, looking at the right direction for, um, the effort. And so, I mean, while, again, I'll just say, you know, if you, if you, uh, decide that, that option two is something that we want to explore, it doesn't preclude option one. I've had conversations with Barclays and Providence, um, specifically telling them that, you know, the council and port might decide that we want to go with the private model. And if we explore that, we may be back at the nonprofit model if it's not, um, feasible. Now, they'll have to consider if they want to spend time with, with us again, um, or maybe the terms change, you know, from their perspective, um, because again, they've spent, you know, a fair amount of time and money on the project that, that shouldn't go, um, you know, that's, that's going to be, you know, gone if, if we go with option two. And so, I don't know if that's a direct answer to your question as such, but, um, it's more, it's more that we, you know, just try to be fair to the parties. If we're going to make a change, um, you know, we should head in that direction and see what happens. But again, it's possible that we won't come to terms, that the private markets won't like it, and we could be back talking about whether or not the council and port want to move forward with the nonprofit model.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that's a, a direct enough answer, I guess I would say. Thank you.
See, what, what I was thinking before was whether because of the timing and, and the relatively small cost of, of updating that study that we had done on the nonprofit model, because from a standpoint of timing, if you get in two or three months, then what is the timing going forward? So I was just looking at it from a standpoint, could you invest a hundred thousand dollars to update that study? You can s- s- say that, you know, if the private model works and, and there's less dollars with that or whatever, or that's preferred method of proceeding, then you, you've got that, you can go that way, but, but you also could take and, and have a leg up in terms of evaluating it to the extent that, that, uh, that didn't work out. And, and, and again, there's just a lot of uncertainties here that we have. So I was just trying to balance the, the relative amounts that we would have to try to do something.
Additional questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Let me just try to understand all these options. First option was what we had talked about before, is that correct? That was the, uh, nonprofit model and, um, according to that, we had no obligation to pay that debt if it didn't perform, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that, that is correct. Yep.
And just a related question, do we have any obligation to pay their mortgage at the beginning of the pandemic? And did they ask us to use the TIF funds to pay their mortgage? And when we declined to do that, did Triple Five go to the state legislature to try to force us to use TIF funds to pay their mortgage?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I believe that is all correct.
Thank you. Option two, uh, it talks about an equity position of thirty million dollars. Who has that equity? Could be, because in my understanding, equity is an ownership interest in a company or organization. Does the city have an equity position in this under that proposal? Or does that thirty million dollars go to equity for Triple Five?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that, that's all, that would all yet to be negotiated, is yet to be negotiated. To put a finer point on it, it would technically be the Port Authority because the, it's the port's TIF. But, um, how that thirty million would function, um, is still to be determined. Um, it could function, um, in the same way that other TIF, uh, investments are made in the project, um, and potentially recapturable. Or it could be done in a different way. I call it TIF equity because I was searching for a way to distinguish it from the other TIF that we have in the project, um, which is the, the seventy million, call it, or the parking and other public infrastructure. And so, the answer to your question is, we haven't gotten there yet.
And then in the third option, you indicated, you know, maybe we decide to put it on hold or not do it and that would be our decision. Why is that not Triple Five's decision? Why don't they come up with the thirty million dollars to make this project go forward?
It might be best to ask Kurt Hagan, who happens to be here tonight, that question.
Evening.
Good evening, sir.
Port President, Councilmembers, Commissioners and, um, and Councilmember Nelson. It's been a difficult year for Triple Five and for Mall of America. We'll lose upwards of a hundred million dollars, uh, through this pandemic for which we received no federal aid, no state aid, uh, no aid. So we're in a very difficult spot. We, we do not have the ability to move forward with the equity to privately finance this right now. So given those options, we still need to raise thirty million is a fraction of the equity that needs to be raised. We've looked at it, we've modeled it with Barclays and with our underwriters. In order to get the returns to attract that equity up to a level that gives us a shot at raising the equity, it would take, we believe, an additional thirty million dollars.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you. Uh, it just real briefly, and I can follow up with you, uh, later on this for more detail as well. So that, that additional thirty million, it sounds like, um, all this TIF is kind of coming from maybe some different buckets with tighter fencing around where different portions of it can be spent. But I guess over, to, to put forward such a large amount of that TIF, knowing there's going to be some recovery, are we going to see a period of substantial restraint around the ability to support other projects in the South Loop District leveraging TIF? I know we've looked at multiple housing projects that leaned pretty heavy on TIF for affordability components. We're looking at an expo in two thousand twenty-seven and, and putting up, uh, facilities. I'm sure TIF will be a big part of that. Uh, how, how long are we going to need to wait for that bucket to fill back up before we can start looking at the many other things we can use to generate economic activity over there?
Sure. Mayor and Councilmember Martin, so this TIF, um, is generated from mall property taxes and governed by the two thousand sixteen development agreement that we have with the mall and also by state statute. And so, um, while there's a portion of the TIF that we can use for other projects in South Loop, frankly, we spent a bunch of that on the SIF project. And so the majority of the TIF that we can use outside of the mall project is spoken for and committed to, um, this project inside that development agreement. TIF generated from, uh, the Rosa Development used for housing TIF on that project is separate, it's a separate bucket. TIF generated from the Arter and Quinn Project, which is over there on the Apple Tree Bluff area over there, again, fenced for that project. TIF generated from, uh, Bloomington Central Station, fenced for them. And so this, the TIF that we're talking about here is mall fenced TIF. It does, you know, spending this, call it a hundred million dollars now-ish for this project would take out our cash. And then we'd be generating, you know, nine, ten, eleven-ish million dollars a year, um, moving into the future, um, leading up to about another hundred, a hundred and thirty million dollars or so that you have to spend. Again, that money is fenced in this project again. So the CFO isn't here tonight, so I'll say this, um, maybe she's watching on TV, but there's, there's an argument to be made that, um, instead of spending this cash that you borrow this hundred million dollars, because borrowing money, especially, you know, a government borrowing money today is really cheap, right? You're never going to see interest rates this low. It might make sense, um, and we have to talk to our municipal advisor who is here tonight, um, about that, our CFO and lots of conversations, but, um, it's something that's just been floating around a bit, um, that it might make sense to borrow that hundred million dollars because you're going to pay one or two percent on it and still have the cash, um, in the bank, which gives you, you know, greater flex, flexibility. But, um, so again, just to recap, this is fenced money for the mall project. It, it could only be used on an expo, if you will, if, uh, the mall was developing the expo. And, um, because you asked, I brought up the, 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 the borrowing, uh, concept again that hasn't been vetted, but it's just something that, that we should think about, um, before, if and before we move forward with a project like this.
That's helpful, thank you.
Additional questions or do we want to hear from Bonnie from the Convention of Visitors Bureau? Why don't we bring Bonnie up?
I've got Bonnie's presentation and we'll click through it.
Okay.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, oh, I'm all hung up on, these aren't good for jewelry, are they?
Just, just wait till you have to have hearing aids, it's even worse.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Mr. President, members of the Port Authority and members of the council. It is really good to be here in person with you tonight and, uh, I hope that I can add some information to you, uh, uh, for this decision that you're going to make. I just wanted to share a few things, uh, so thank you for allowing me to do that. I'm actually here to speak in favor of this project, so I'll, I'll certainly say that right off of the, the bat. But I do believe that it would be a very popular attraction to be able to offer our visitors, uh, which would greatly benefit the hospitality industry. The industry would welcome this project, uh, but it, I believe it'll generate new business, which is important, but also some new tax revenue, uh, for the city. Uh, the hospitality hi- uh, industry nationwide, worldwide, was hit particularly hard by the pandemic. One of the hardest hits, they are saying. It really goes into It really goes into a lot of different areas, but right here at home, it has really taken a toll, as you all know. I'm not telling you anything new. We have seen some recovery this summer, which is good. There is pent up demand, that's the other good news, we do study this. But there's a long way to go, and there is a tremendous amount of competition for this traveler. To capture or to have this product in our arsenal would be huge and be very beneficial in luring visitors to stay in Bloomington. This past summer, we actually embarked on a brand sentiment study. Now, it was mostly to understand, to try to understand the impact of all the social unrest that happened back last summer, mostly in Minneapolis. And we were trying to take a look at that, but we also took the opportunity to ask a question, ask our customers, past visitors and potential visitors, what kinds of new things would they like to see going forward? I mean, we had this opportunity, thought it was a clean time to do that. And so I'd like to just share a few slides from that research project. When we, when we asked this, first of all, the study was done by our global agency MMGY, and they're a great agency, they have an actual research division and so forth. As we, we looked at them, one of the first questions, we said, what's your personal impression? Give us like five words, as Bloomington has a destination. And this was really some pleasant news. I mean, we came off of some pretty bad press around the world, certainly from our past visitors, when you see these, these words that are, are coming up, the larger ones are the ones, they, they do this so that they come up more recently, this is why they, they focus on them. You can see a lot of the safe, I was so happy to see that, family oriented, fun, et cetera. But also from the prospective visitor, and we thought this was good news as well. I love seeing that safe and the family oriented and the entertaining. The next slide, we said, we asked these people, how, how does Bloomington rate on some of the following attributes? Certainly, we love to see that they're family vacation, it's an easy destination to get around, friendly residence, that's nice when you interact with, with people, diverse and quality hotels, we love that, centrally located to a lot of other attractions, which is important. Of course, the tax-free clothing and shoes. Shoes always come up as a shopping, they're very specific, so it's crazy. But good value for the money, a lot to see, clean city and a safe city. And so this, this was huge to us, we liked that. Our next question really was, how familiar are you with the following things in Bloomington? And as you can see here, the past visitors is the red bar, the gray is perspective. Past visitors would be those that have come, or in the perspective would be those that have heard about it. But in both cases, it was very high that the Mall of America rated high on their list. And what's interesting, the zoo comes in very high, and, and an aquarium, sea life. Now, maybe they didn't associate that that was actually in the mall as well, but then you'll see the next one with Nickelodeon Universe and so forth, and Great Wolf is on there as a water park. But you see some of the other historic Fort Snelling, the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife, and that's in Bloomington. That's amazing, that's fabulous. And again, we see the Flyover America, which is in the mall, and the Highland Hills Ski Area. So all in all, I mean, these were, were pretty good ratings. As we move to, really, the next one was really, what was the purpose? Why did you come to visit? And it comes up very high, the past visitors in particular, to, to visit the Mall of America. And they like this leisure giveaway, the family and friends and so on. The business trip and the meetings and conventions are, we believe, skewed very low, given the pandemic. I mean, essentially, that division and, and market segment has been shut down and will be slower to recovery. But again, some, some great numbers here. The next slide is actually some, some good news as well, because it's really the following activities did you participate in. And when you look at this chart, six, seven of them are actually in the, in the Mall of America or close to it, and the other ones are nearby. So we do see a drop off in some cases and some of the ones towards the end. But when you look at, again, that zoo or the aquarium, they love that, the shopping is always very big and so on. I think there's also some opportunity here for us that we're looking at for some other things, but both past and prospective visitors. And the next slide was, we said, really, and this is one that we, we took the opportunity to include this, this question. It's, what would, what would increase your interest in Bloomington? If you were looking ahead and, you know, maybe visiting the next time or whatever. And the question really was, having an indoor water park, you know, largest, influential. And, you know, 61% of the past visitors said absolutely, as did the perspective. We also, a multipurpose event center was up there, I know that's something down the road that, you know, continually comes up, sports complex, all of that is tied in, although the, the real question, I think the most popular, was some sort of an attraction, again, going back to that family fun, entertainment and so forth. So we were pleasantly, those are some of the highlights and, and we specifically wanted to, to get some of those things. Happy at another time to share some of the other things we found, but all in all, we're pretty pleased with it. I also know that late 2018, there were two studies done, I believe, relative to hotel rooms. They were done by independent research firms, I think the city commissioned them, if I'm not mistaken. But just to, you know, put this in perspective, when you talk about potential visits and who, how successful this could be, you know, you, you could hear numbers all around the board. But, you know, one study said like 100,000 new, you know, room nights and so forth, okay? If you don't believe that, the other study said 65,000. Well, let's use that number and just say if, and which I think is, is very conservative considering the fact that we hosted the Super Bowl. And while that was in Minneapolis, St. Paul and Bloomington, we had full hotels, the major events at the mall. Remember, we had both teams at Mall of America, so we were an intricate part and an important part of this. That alone in just three days drew 26,505 room nights. So when you look at anywhere between 65 and 85,000, I think is a, it does not shock me or think that this is overstated as far as the popularity of what this project could be. So at, at the end of the day, you know, you as the leaders and your position and like past councils, you, you really have a lot of ideas and projects that come your way. That's, that's, there's no secret to that. But I really believe that this particular project, I would see this as an investment in our future. I don't want to date myself, I, I love the city, I love my industry, I have a lot of passion and, and again, but I've been doing this for 36 years in this position. I have, I watched the Mall of America be built, I have watched the hotel industry rise up to the point of, I believe we have the most hotel rooms in the state concentrated in one area. And these things are, have not been bad investments, but quite the opposite, they've been great decisions that have brought such economic value. I mean, just alone, the tax base between the mall and the hotels represents in the city, so good for everyone that lives here, works here. And so they're, they're great, great investments, and that's how I hope that we would look about this. I, I'm so excited about this project, I have been, I think it is still the number one question that I get. What's the status of the water park? Is it going to go forward? Gosh, we need something like that. It would be a great thing that we would have to, to offer. And so anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak about something I'm pretty passionate about our industry again, and I hope that you will share in this enthusiasm, and more importantly, I hope this was helpful. And at any time, if I can answer any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any questions of Bonnie?
I was just going to ask Bonnie, you, you talked about 100,000 nights, 65,000 nights. What are the total number of hotel nights available? I mean, if you took the year, you have that number offhand? Is it a million, 2 million?
At least, and it would depend on, you know...
I was just trying to get an idea of the percentage, so if you, if you said you had 2 million...
Yes.
100,000 could be a 5%. Shane's got the number, 3,450,000, all right, so.
And, you know, whether it's occupancy, whether, you know, the, the gates and so forth.
Yeah.
The other thing I should mention, we're very excited about a new tool that we have, which I hope to bring back some more information at, at a later date, because we've just ramped up with it. But it's, it's a system, it's called Zartico. It's actually an operating system that provides visitor and resident movement throughout the market. They use devices to track and so forth. I've seen some early data, I mean, a lot of residents, the South Loop area is very, very popular, and both for residents, they could be working there, they could be going to the mall, they could be, you know, living there, there's, there's a lot of, the most activity, which, which shouldn't be surprising. But this tool, we feel, could, you know, help with points of interest, insight on the visitor info, outside of the hotel metrics and so forth. So it's, you know, areas of, of opportunity. So we're very excited about that, happy to share that, we're just kind of getting some of that data, but anyway.
Questions, additional questions of Bonnie? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Is there anything additional? Shane, are we into the discussion phase of the evening?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President and members, this is the discussion phase. Again, we're looking for the council in Port to point us in a direction this evening. And just to recap, three possibilities are option one, which would be to revisit the nonprofit model that we had talked about in the past. Option two would be more of a, a traditional TIF equity portion, addition to the, to the cost. And then option three would be to kind of sit tight and see if, what, what the future might hold, especially as it pertains to the, to the pandemic here. Councilmember Loman?
So Mayor, just another question too, that I had, that just occurred to me as you said the options there, and I heard the, the first, first three options there, it sounded like that Shane had put forward a, a modified option one, where you could modify that. Is that part of that option one, or in terms of your thinking?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Loman, yeah, so there's, you know, we, we sit here today a year and a half roughly after, or, or a little bit more after we put the project on hold due to the pandemic. The nonprofit model could be tweaked, right? Like, so we go through the ground lease reappraisal and the feasibility study redo, the numbers change, right? And so the term sheet could potentially change. If the term sheet changes, we have to go back and negotiate that with the various project parties. 515 is a player in that model, they are the landowner and the management company. There's, you know, a lot of discussion about 515's role in the nonprofit model that some people liked and some people didn't. It's covered in the media a fair amount.
Thanks for that, I, I just wanted to be clear that there's a second one there, and then, and it occurs to me too, and, and then correct me if I'm wrong, that there's also a fourth option that we don't move forward at all with, with this. Is that also a possibility? I don't, it sounded like the, the third option, but is that a fourth option that we would not do anything at all? And then, just help me understand then, you know, based on those 2016 dollars, what happens if we were to make, you know, do that as an option, option four?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Loman, so I hope I was clear, I mean, we tried to categorize the three options into three buckets, but there's, you know, an infinite, infinite number of sub-options therein. And a number four option is an indefinite hold for sure, you know, we just decided that we don't want to do the water park at all, and that's certainly something the boards can decide. What happens to that money is it just sits there until a project comes along that the council in Port does, do want to do. The TIF district there is open through 2033, it will accumulate, you know, 240-ish million dollars by then. And, you know, at that point, if, if the boards don't decide to move forward to the project, ultimately that money would go back to, part of it would go back to the city, county and school district, and another part of it would go back to the fiscal disparities pool.
And, and that leads me to my last question then, looking at, at especially that option, that fourth option, and then really the other ones, there seems to be risks associated with each one of those from a taxpayer perspective, and then also benefits for the taxpayer. And just looking at that, you know, that, that fourth option, and you could comment on some of the other options, what, as you look at those, if there's, you know, a bullet point, if you're looking at it from those perspective, you know, what, what are those benefits and those risks that are associated with those, with those options?
Yeah, so, you know, again, on, on the nonprofit model, no Bloomington property taxes are at risk, and they would not have been, should the project have closed before COVID or had opened the day before COVID. As long as the council in Port Authority took the advice of legal staff and didn't try to bail the project out, would the bondholders or somebody have asked? Maybe, right? But as long as you stick to your guns and don't do that, the bondholders are the ones that would have seen a loss, or at least a temporary loss, until the project got back on track, reopened. I mean, it's a 30-year financing, so there, there was no...
Sorry.
There's, there is no risk in the nonprofit model to the Bloomington property taxpayer as long as you take the legal advice that was provided. The same thing would be true in the second one, so that's private financing. You have this 100 million in cash today, it's, as President Erickson calls it, fenced money. It's derived from property taxes from the mall, it's not derived from the median value home in Bloomington. A lot of it is derived from the fiscal disparities pool now that we got in 2013, which is a benefit finally, that Bloomington gets a little bit back from the fiscal disparities pool, which is a huge benefit to Bloomington. You can spend it now, on the water park project now, in quotes, on the water park project, which then benefits the Bloomington property taxpayer via these taxes that get thrown off into the general fund. Now, you could let those taxes flow into the general fund, subsidize the median value home substantially, frankly. Or you could funnel that money into a citywide development fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, frankly, do whatever the council decides that they want to do with it. That's council money, it's not poor money. And so there are no, well, there's never, there's never zero risk, but we've worked, the team has worked tirelessly to structure the nonprofit model and this other model, which is just a lot more simple, it's easy to structure that one so that it doesn't have risk. It's a lot harder to do the nonprofit model so that it doesn't have risk, but we worked for two years to get to that point, so that the risks to the city and Port Authority were very, very small. And, you know, we, we outlined the risks and went through them, that they're, it's not that they're zero, but the financial, the direct financial risks are practically zero. There are these other non-tangible things, bond rating, reputation, things like that. There are these other non-tangible things, bond rating, reputation, things like that.
Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of at this point in the, in the project, you know, if you're, if you're thinking about the question that Councilmember Loman asked, which is, you know, in the end, we have the do nothing option to kind of, that's one of the things that's on the table. And it's always a question about, you know, if he, it's not really do nothing, it's wait for the next thing to come along is really, is really the option there because there's not really a, practically speaking, if we send them away, they'll go find a new idea and come back and we'll be talking about something different in a while. So kind of the way I look at it is I'm kind of in the same position that the port authority president is in, that for $100,000, it's worth taking the nonprofit thing and bringing it current so we can see how that would work. Because $100,000 in the context of the project is not very much money at all. I think it's also worth going and having a conversation with the mall about what a structure might look like for the, the second option that was proposed, and see if there is a second option that looks like it's something that we would take up. And then that gets us in a position where we have really, you know, door number one, door number two, and door number three. And we won't be able to open door number three. You know, we'll pick whatever's behind there and then we'll end up having another conversation at some point. But we'll be able to have a couple of options that are at least worked up to the point where we can, can make some choices on that and be informed about deciding either we're going to select one of the water park options or we're going to say we're done for now with the water park and wait for some new thing to come along. And I think that's the most prudent thing to do at this point. That's kind of where I'm coming down on this.
You know, I was thinking when we were talking about the taxes on the home, and what we forget, and I think we remembered it actually during the pandemic, because we saw how much benefit the city has had from liquor and lodging taxes, which has permitted us to have lower residential taxes. I mean, I look at our home, which we've lived in 40 years, and our property taxes have been roughly flat almost for 20 years. And the reason they've been flat is because there's been revenue coming in from these other sources that Bloomington has that most other people don't have. So I think one of the things that we get into, and it's always the question, how do we maintain this vehicle, the Mall of America, and other businesses out there that have generated this revenue? And we know that without investment, they won't continue to generate those kinds of revenues, so you have to put dollars in. And I think when we take a look at this particular situation, because the money is really dedicated money in a sense, it's fenced, we have very limited things we can do with it, my assessment of using those funds is different than it would be if we were talking about something that we already had ability to do. So, I mean, I completely agree with Commissioner Peterson, and that's why I suggested I, I'd like to see really enough combination of options one and two, and the mall really has to decide what they want to do. But I think for us to get our studies updated and things, if the mall wants to pursue the private option, they get out there, they find that it's just not going to be feasible, then instead of having to wait another six months or however long it takes, we're in a position to move much more quickly. And as I understand it, we do have some deadlines that we have to, local auction sales tax and other things that have to be committed by the end of January, which complicate the overall picture. So it seems to me that we're in a situation that we aren't committing anything to move forward if we decide we want to put $100,000 down relative to what we've got. It's just not a whole lot of money that enables us to go. But we're clearly going to be in a situation that we're, I look at this a lot like the discussion we had back in March or whatever, when we were talking about the options, whether we wanted to try to get additional flexibility for TIF. And we had a lot of discussion, and it really came down after talking about it a lot, that it's nice to have options on the table. And so I'm looking at this as a situation that it's nice to have options on the table, and we're going to have to, you know, make hard decisions going forward. But right now, it would be nice to have as many options as we can.
I would agree, the notion of options and information, as Commissioner Peterson brought forward, I think to have the full information to decide what the best route forward might be, I think is imperative for this group to have. I think the underlying question on all of this is, as groups, as the port, as the council, do we want to direct staff to continue moving forward and trying to figure this out? Or do we want to throw up a hard stop and say, you know what, we're out of the water park business and this isn't what we want to do? I think that's the decision we want to, we need to make tonight. We're not committing to anything, we're not saying yes or no to one option or the other. We're basically saying, this is something we want to continue pursuing, or we want to continue talking about as a council and as a port authority. And if you recall, as Shane said, we've had 10 meetings on this and in the past few years, and at each meeting, this, the discussion continued to move this forward. I think we all agreed that this was something, this looks like it would be a worthwhile kind of thing, it would work. And I think if not for the pandemic, frankly, I believe that they would be coming up out of the ground at a pretty quick rate right now if not for the pandemic. And we weren't that far off from that. I do believe that it's worth considering, it's worth keeping the staff work moving forward to see what our possibilities would be, gain more information, and to keep these options on the table and moving forward. I've, I mean, I've been bullish on the idea of this water park. I think, I think it will be a rousing success. I've used the example, you know, over President's Day weekend, do you want to go to middle of Nowhereville, Wisconsin to go to a water park? Or do you want to come to the Mall of America to go to a water park to spend your long President's Day weekend? And frankly, there is no question in my mind what that answer is going to be for a lot of folks. This is a place that people will want to be. President's weekend, MEA weekend, and, you know, all summer. I think it will be, it will be overwhelmingly successful. That's my opinion, and we would have to get there. But I think for that reason, I think it's worth continuing this discussion, to keep moving this forward, to decide what the best possibility would be, to have both options on the table, and, you know, be able to evaluate them, I think is the correct way to go. But I do think this would be, this is important for the resiliency of Bloomington and of the Mall of America. And I think it's, I think it's something that is, is a strong and very effective way of making sure that the resiliency is maintained for the next generation. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, I forget that I don't have to push the button anymore, so I shouldn't clear my throat into the microphone. Just to, I mean, I think about four or five people now have kind of tiptoed around this, so I'm just going to kind of put a finer point on this, Shane. We could, we could tonight say we essentially want to do both options one and two, correct? I mean, that, it seems like that's what Commissioner Peterson was saying and what some other folks have said, that we would, we don't want to take either off the table, that we would like to continue learning about and, and see, I mean, seeing if either, either of them, not both, obviously, would be a viable option. Is that, I mean, is that, the risk of overusing the word, is that an option?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, I think, yeah, simply put, I think the answer's yes. The negative is, is that, you know, if there's clear direction, if, if the boards now given the private financing option, wanted to move away from the nonprofit model, you know, the efforts would be focused there, right? The negative of, you know, taking the two paths is that you, you, you send us in two different directions, and so we're not laser focused on one. We're kind of, okay, we've got, you know, a foot in each pool, if you will, and that type of thing. If you don't like the private financing model, then just say, yep, go for the nonprofit. I don't mean to sway you either way, it's truly just a decision point for the council in port. That's the negative of it, but you can do that. It'll just, it'll probably take a little bit longer for us to figure out if we do that. But that's certainly a viable suboption of what we presented.
Thank you. And I guess, you know, from my perspective, I certainly have a preference, I certainly have an opinion on what I think I'd be most comfortable with, but I, you know, I think, given the magnitude of what we're talking about, both in terms of the, I think, the potential positives, but of course also the risks, you know, to my mind, a little extra time doing our homework and exploring the options is, I think, well worth it to kind of see where we could, where we could come out on this. So I guess, you know, if we had to pick, I know where I would, I would go down, but I think it seems to me, moving forward, you know, continuing to explore both, you know, like has been said, the updating the study and doing all of those things, you know, I think that is, that is valuable, but I think there is valuable in exploring the, there is value in exploring the more traditional financing approach as well. So I guess that's kind of where I'm, I'm coming down on this, is that I'm perfectly comfortable moving forward with essentially saying both for now.
Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I want to put a finer point on a couple of the comments that Shane made. And I actually am going to provide a recommendation for the bodies here. The finer point is that continuing to develop both options is going to be an incredibly resource-intensive activity. Trying to do two different finance development efforts at the same time for the same project not only is going to double the amount of work for our staff, it will, I also think probably have a little bit of a delimiting effect on some of the potential partners in these projects. If you're asking parties in either of those modes to put full effort into project development, and there's the possibility that we get to the end of the research on those two and we pick one over the other, I'm not sure how enthusiastic all of the parties are going to be about participating in that. Because frankly, they're going to want some certainty that they're working towards something. I think it makes sense to do what has been suggested about getting information that's going to be necessary in the event that one option doesn't pan out. But I, you know, I think that there is, I think that there is merit in heading down the road of developing the private financing model for several reasons. One, this is the traditional approach that we have used all the time. It's one that's well understood, both by the community and, you know, the decision makers, and frankly, the, you know, the financing markets. And I would say that the legislature has put their own impamorator on supporting that by providing more flexibility in the tax law that passed in July to again provide additional resources to help that model move forward. So I also think it has the additional benefits of heightened transparency, and I think it's much more easier to communicate to the community how that approach is structured. Those are intangibles, they're not necessarily, you know, things that would finalize your decision to support one or the other. But I think that we should go down that road, and we should do as the president and others have suggested, and invest some resources to make sure that the other elements are updated. So in the event that the capital markets aren't there to support the private model, that we still have that other option available. That'd be my recommendation. But I, I get real concerned when we say we're going to try to go down both roads at the same time. I don't think that's a recipe for success.
So I, I think I may have been a little bit unclear in the comments that I was making. I was not necessarily suggesting we take, I realize I said this, but I think that what I, what I intended to say was not necessarily that we go full bore down both roads, but, you know, I think as, as the city manager laid out, that we, we sort of, to the extent possible, do what we need to do to make sure that both continue to be options. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Yeah, and along those lines, what I suggested, that all I was thinking, I think the Mall of America's preferred approach is they want to explore the private option, which is fine, we've largely done the nonprofit. So all I was thinking in terms of it is that if all we had to do was in effect have the feasibility study updated, which is going to be done by a third party, that it would be worthwhile to have that expenditure while this other exploration goes on. So, I mean, to the extent that there's duplicate of work or something involved with it, then that was not my intent. I was just trying to preserve an option in the event that we had it, and I thought that it was relatively worth spending $100,000 to get that done.
Understood. Councilmember Carter and then Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will explicitly answer your question and say that I am supportive of the water park project and supportive of figuring out a path forward. When I think about the different types of options that could be developed in that very specific space with the constraints of that specific TIF funding, you know, I'm hard pressed to think of other projects that would be as significant of an amenity and agree with a lot of what you said about families visiting. And I guess I'll just make my, my comments pretty short and say that I think I'm, based on what I'm hearing, that is the path that I was leaning or wanting to voice my support for, is going down the path of the private model. And I'm fully supportive of also, you know, using the 100,000 to update our study on the nonprofit model, but really prioritizing the private model.
Commissioner Peterson? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I, I just want to make it clear that, you know, just kind of like President Erickson talked about just a moment ago, that the, my goal in supporting that was to make sure that we preserve the idea of the nonprofit models as a backstop. Okay? And so, you know, to the extent that we can go and work with the mall to come to an arrangement that makes sense, I think we should have that be as our priority. But just like the president said, you know, kind of preserving this other option is a worthwhile thing, I think, given the amount of money that we're talking about to go do that.
Shane?
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and commissioners, and councilmembers. So in an attempt to summarize, right, what I think I'm hearing, I just want to point one caveat out. So I think where the boards might be headed is focus on option two, see if you can make that work, preserve the option for option one by updating the studies in the event that option two doesn't pan out for one reason or another. I don't want to speak for people that haven't spoken, but that's kind of the way I'm feeling. If the, just in case motions are coming and things like that to that effect, one of the thing is timing. And so it's possible, maybe this isn't, I'm just thinking on the fly here, it's possible that the feasibility study and all of that will take, you know, once, we haven't talked to the feasibility consultant in a month or two, but I guess, again, just thinking on the fly, the point is, is that the nonprofit model work will likely be, take longer than the private financing stuff, but maybe that isn't an issue. So I think I just talked myself out of it, but.
All right, we need to let Commissioner Hunt talk.
Well, before you said that, I was, I was coming to the terms of something what President Erickson had suggested about the, the updating. The private scenario to me would seem, if it worked, did I have questions about funding and pricing right now and just whether that really is feasible? But it's more transparent option, I think. And a lot of all the negativity that came about from that nonprofit and the questions and the lack of understanding in the press and so forth. And while I am a huge supporter of the mall, I'm still on the, not decisive yet on the water park itself, but continue to try to be open on all the discussion and the structure. So not ready to say, mm, pull the plug, not ready to say, mm, pause yet, but still think it's worth the discussion and so forth, and to see what's out there as other options that might be more comfortable for us.
Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Loman?
Oh, clearly, Mayor, I can see the direction of this is going around to option two. I'm certainly more supportive of option one in the sense that I think long-term we'll get more benefit for our residents. And, you know, certainly I'm in favor of moving And, you know, certainly I'm in favor of moving forward regardless, either option one or two, but I just wanted to point out that I just do think that there is an opportunity with that option one to, from a long-term standpoint, really bring some additional revenues to the city. And so that's sort of where I find myself, but I'm not going to argue any further. If we can get a project done, I'm certainly in that camp, and so I will support moving that forward, so.
Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Beloga. Jack, you're on mute, I believe. Jack, you're on mute, can't hear you.
Excuse me, thank you. We'll have to figure out going forward if we raise our hands if we're in TV land, because I've had mine raised for at least the previous 10 speakers, so most of what I had to say has already been said, but I support option two, the private with TIF for a number of reasons, many of which have already been said as I've alluded to. It continues to, we need to support the mall. Our role in the partnership that our forefathers created when they chose to develop the stadium site with retail was is to create a partnership between Triple Five and the City of Bloomington. That partnership has been very mutually beneficial to both parties. The lodging and admissions tax, as we've all acknowledged, allows Bloomington to provide our residents and businesses with exceptional city services while maintaining one of the lowest property tax rates within our peer cities. The city needs to do our part to maintain that partnership and enjoy those benefits. The studies of the water park that's already been done show that this is a very viable project and continues to enhance those benefits to both the city and create additional traffic to the mall, which benefits that party. The only question to me is, is which model? And as I said, there's pluses and minuses to both, but I prefer the private model for these reasons. One, as Shane alluded to, it's much more transparent. It's a faster model. We can get on with this in a more expeditious manner. I also think that what we haven't talked about is, if we do nothing with that state fiscal disparity TIF, you know, many of the cities around the state eye that fiscal disparities TIF with a great envy, and future legislative bodies can go and reverse that. That accounts for nine or $10 million a year in fiscal TIF coming to our city. And I think that is what tilts me to looking at item two, or option two, excuse me, rather than one. But I still think that we should go forward and update that study. If nothing else, it's going to be beneficial to us to get a quicker look at the continued viability of the project, but as Manager Verbugee said, you really have to ride one horse. You have to put your, the majority of your efforts in a particular direction, and I know that some of the comments have said do both and ride a dual track, but, you know, I've been a developer for over 30 years, and you're asking an impossible task to do that. And so I hope that the majority of those in the room tonight will approve not only continuing with the project, but as a primary use the private TIF method. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga?
Yes.
No, I said, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing, I'm wondering if either yourself, Mayor, or the city manager, or maybe Shane can explain for the public that might be watching this fiscal disparities, how much of that TIF is fiscal disparities versus how much is forgone property, not forgone property, that's not the right way to phrase it, property taxes that the mall pays that go into the TIF fund, because I think that's a confusion for a number of people.
Shane? Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson and members. So of the roughly $100 million that we have today, again, roughly, about 40% of that is what we call traditional TIF, so that came into the fund that the Port Authority has funds, I guess plural, from the property taxes that the mall pays that are derived from TIF in the traditional way, which are the city, county, and school portion of the property tax, which is roughly 30 to 40% of the property tax that the mall would pay in any particular year. Since 2013's legislation, we collect the fiscal disparities portion of that commercial property tax, which happens to be somewhere between 30 or 40% of their property tax bill as well. That money flows into the Port Authority's TIF funds, and it's used for these sources that we've been talking about tonight, public infrastructure usually, but since the 2021 tax bill can be used in different ways. And so this isn't money that comes from Bloomington property taxpayers, except for one single property taxpayer, Mall of America. I guess it's multiple taxpayers on those sites, but it's those sites. Those funds can be used for economic development projects and have been to date to the benefit of the Bloomington property taxpayers, both on the commercial and residential side, as we've been talking about tonight, through the admissions taxes and lodging taxes and just the general taxes that come off of the mall already. And so, again, this is money that is generated from the mall's property taxes, about 40% of it is traditional TIF, about 60% of it and all future payments are what we call TIF that's derived from the fiscal disparities pool via 2013 legislation that Bloomington was successful in getting to fund projects like this to the benefit of Bloomington and to the benefit of the region.
So, and just for clarity for people that don't understand fiscal disparities, that is property taxes paid by regional communities into a regional fund that go to regional projects. So essentially, that is money that other neighboring cities in the region are putting into this to support this huge regional asset. Is that accurate?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, we could spend a few hours talking about fiscal disparities. I could probably spend about 20 minutes, because I understand about a third of it. We do have experts on staff that know it better than I do. But in a general sense, what fiscal disparities is, is it's property taxes that are paid by the non-residential taxpayers. So a resident, a homeowner in Bloomington pays roughly a third, a third, a third to the city, county, and schools, and then the mosquito control district and so on are the bottom of the tax bill, right? If you're a commercial property taxpayer in Bloomington, you pay about a third to those three, so just call it 11, 11, 11. It moves around from year to year. I think it's more like 15 for the city this year, whatever. So a third to the locals, a third to the state, and a third to fiscal disparities. And what fiscal disparities is, is a formula that captures the development that happened after 1972, might be off a year, and is redistributed to the communities that don't have that property tax base. So it helps out communities that don't have commercial property tax base. And because Bloomington largely developed after that date, we had been the largest loser for decades. So we lost property tax base, and the property taxes were higher in Bloomington because of the program for decades and decades and decades, and that's still the case. We're just the second biggest loser now, because Minneapolis finally has developed enough over the past 10 years or so, where they are now the biggest contributor into the pool. So, you know, Bloomington, yeah, we're the fourth largest city in the state, but honestly, we're not that much larger than Maple Grove and some of the other suburbs when you really look at a population standpoint. From a property tax standpoint, we're still pretty big, and we've been the biggest contributor for a long time. Even after you net out the benefit from the 2013 tax bill, we were still the biggest contributor. Even if you took that $9 million out that we, roughly, that we got post-2013, we're still the biggest contributor. Only in, I think it was 2018 or '19, did Minneapolis finally surpass us. So Bloomington has been losing because of the fiscal disparities program for a long time. We finally got some benefit in '13. We still contribute a lot into the pool, and a lot of other communities benefit, and that's part of the Minnesota miracle, and there's a lot of people that really like that program, but as a Bloomington taxpayer, it's not been a good deal.
Thank you for taking the time to explain that. Just quickly, in my opinion, I favor two with that, private financing, and I would very strongly look at how to reduce or eliminate the equity portion of that, of it. I think that I would love to see the contribution that Triple Five is making to this. I think it's a fantastic project. I think it's going to be beneficial for both of us, and I'd like to see them beyond just borrowing, making a contribution to it. I understand it's been a tough climate for them, but I also, you know, recall a presentation where they are a very large organization that does significant business in multiple markets and is very financially stable, and I think, you know, I'd like to make sure that we are not putting tax money, regardless of property taxes from Bloomington or other communities, into the coffers, or lack of a better term, of a private organization. I totally support the project. I support funding infrastructure and all of those things, so maybe we'll go back to our last meeting where we could call me a TIF purist, but I think that, I think it's a good project, and I think that's the way to go, and I think there's a way to do that, and I got confidence that staff will work really hard to do that, and I think it's in the benefit of Triple Five, so I think they'll very much work hard to do it, and appreciate everyone's effort on it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any additional comments or council? Are we ready for action? Shane, could you put the motions back up just so we have the correct language if we...
Mr. Mayor and President, Mr. Members, I've been working with the city attorney to try to fashion revised motions that reflects, I think, the will of the boards, and maybe the city attorney can read off what she said, because there's some procedural and purchasing considerations to think about, so that we're in compliance with our various policies. So if I may ask the city attorney to...
Ms. Manderscheid?
Thank you. I don't know how to stop the echo, sorry. All right, Mayor members and council president and commission members, I think that this reflects the discussion. Obviously, feel free to edit it as you see, sort of the hybrid. You'll need to make two separate motions, one for the port and one for the council. Motion, and second, to authorize city staff to pursue additional research on option two, the private financing with added TIF, and to update the feasibility study for the nonprofit model, option one, including authorizing the mayor slash president and city manager slash port administrator to enter into contracts with consultants consistent with the intent of this motion.
Mr. Mayor, for the council, I would move the motion that Ms. Manderscheid just read.
What? You have $100,000. Can you present her rights if you want to? Oh.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Loman, to authorize, or to follow up on the, the motion is read by Ms. Manderscheid earlier. Not going to bother with that. Council, any further discussion on this? Hearing none? Carolyn?
Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Motion carries seven zero.
And I would entertain a similar motion on the part of the Port Authority.
So moved.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Carolyn, did you get who did that?
Was the motion Peterson? Thank you.
Great. Any further discussion? If not, Carolyn, you want to call the roll?
Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Good discussion on a number of different topics tonight, and looking forward to continuous discussion on, actually, on just about everything on our agenda tonight. I think this was the first step, and we have more to talk about on all of it, so very good. That concludes our agenda. If there is nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from the council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Peterson, Councilmember Martin, and a second by Councilmember Coulter to adjourn on the council meeting. Hearing no further discussion? Carolyn?
Beloga.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question first.
Councilmember Beloga.
Will we go into the special meeting then directly, or will we, how will that operate?
Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, I believe, I'm looking at Matt, but I believe that we will stay in this open meeting, in this, stay in this meeting. This will continue and start, become the next meeting, and then there is a separate WebEx for you to log into for the closed session, but just stay in this meeting, and we'll adopt the resolution to go into closed session. All right? So don't log off.
Thank you. That answers the question. Aye.
Okay. Beloga. To adjourn. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero.
And for the Port Authority, typically, we don't vote, so I will just adjourn the meeting.
Very good. Thank you all. So council, do not close out this meeting, please. We'll use this meeting to pass the resolution, so, but we are officially adjourned for our concurrent meeting between the port and the council. Thank you.